All right, good morning. Good morning and welcome. And today is November 9th and this is the Regular Media of Ventura County Board of Supervisors. And welcome to your boardroom. And we'll start with our roll call, please.
Supervisor Bennett?
Here.
Supervisor Zarabesa?
Here.
Supervisor Parks?
Yes.
Supervisor Foy?
Here.
Supervisor Long?
Here. Thank you. And now it's my pleasure to invite up to the podium Dennis Furco. And Dennis is going to provide us with a moment of inspiration. And I'm going to give just a brief background on Dennis. He was born in Idaho, raised in Oregon, joined the Navy in 1962, served as a construction electrician with the CBs, Hura, stationed at Hoa'wahneemi. He served a tour of duty in Vietnam. After leaving the military, he worked with GTE. He's been a member of the American Legion Post 741 in Camarillo for 21 years, was elected the State Commander of the Organization at the 91st Annual State Convention in Riverside on June 21st, 2009, and served honorably for his year as commander and brought lots of great information and success to both the state and the local service. So Dennis, it's a pleasure to have you here today. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you very much Chairman Cathy. And I do appreciate the opportunity to speak before the county board. Chairman Cathy and board, ladies and gentlemen, especially veterans that are sitting in the office, men and women veterans. Whether this is inspiration or not, but in two days Veterans Day will be here. It originally was the Armistice Day. That's on the 11th hour of the 11th day of the 11th month in 1918, they had a cease-fire was called in the World War I, which was to end all wars. But we know that did not work. But in a celebrity-obsessed culture where shows like Dancing With The Stars and American Idol generate large followings, it is important to remember just who the real stars of America are. Veterans Day is a time to honor not just the heroes, but in fact, all the outstanding men and women who served in our nation's armed forces since our founding more than 234 years ago. President Calvin Cooley was known as Silent Cal because he didn't say very much, but he was positively profound when he said, "The nation which forgets its defenders will be itself forgotten." Not all veterans have seen war, but a common bond that they share is an oath in which they express their willingness to defend their country. We must be there to support of not just the families of the fallen, but the loved ones of those still deployed and those who return permanently changed by the wounds of war. While we are happy to be here today, express our appreciation for our veterans. True appreciation is expressed through deeds, not words. If you're an employer, give extra weight to the experience and skills of the sailor, soldier, airman, turned job applicant. Veterans preference is a requirement for government jobs, but it's also smart business for the private sector as well. When an American Legion auxiliary member asks for a donation for a poppy made by veterans, remember the war veteran that are in the hospital beds. When a member of Congress complains about the cost of a veterans program, remind the lawmaker of the cost of being a veteran. And don't underestimate the power of simply saying thank you to veterans that you encounter. There are approximately 23 million living Americans that have earned the title, including those who continue to serve in uniform. And while the military is undoubtedly stretched thin, the burden is shared by men and women. Women are major contributors to our military presence in Iraq and Afghanistan, and many have given their lives in the war on terrorism. America is home to 1.2 million women veterans, and they deserve our support. America's veterans have made great sacrifices for their country. Those costs have often included long separations from their family, missing the births of their children, freezing in sub-zero temperatures, exposure to Agent Orange in Vietnam, losing limbs, and far too often, losing their lives. While America owes these heroes a debt that cannot be fully repaid, showing our appreciation is the least that we can do. Our American Legion National Commander Jimmy Foster from the state of Alaska, he calls on all members of the American Legion as well as every US citizen, every person here. His slogan is S-A-V-E-D, that's serving America's veterans every day. Whether it's welcoming veterans home from deployment or volunteering at the local VA Hospital, there is no shortage of opportunities to assist those who have given so much for their country. In spite of the sacrifices that nearly all veterans have made and the horrors that some have experienced, the overwhelming majority are proud to have served. 19th century British philosopher John Stuart Mill summed up the necessity of this special group of people when he wrote, "War is an ugly thing, but not the ugliest of things. The decayed state of moral and patriotic feeling which thinks that nothing is worth war is much worse. The person who has nothing for which he is willing to fight, nothing which is more important than his own personal safety, is a miserable creature and has no chance of being free unless made and kept so by the exertions of better men than himself." Mill had it right. Fortunately for all of us, America has blessed throughout its history by many such men and women. I thank you for allowing me to be here. I thank you for the privilege and stuff to speak. God bless America and God bless our veterans. Thank you.
And thank you so much Dennis. I appreciate you coming in. And also I'd like to acknowledge Linda, Dennis's wife. It's a family patriotism, and that just runs deeply throughout the entire family. And also she's provided to us a flyer that is being led by the American Legion's family Camarillo post, and it's a fashion show for Winter Wonderland, and it's to raise funds for the veterans and their support.
Yep.
Toy drive. Toy drive.
Yeah Chairman, yes. That particular thing there, that is for toys, and basically bring it unwrapped, toy $10 or above. And it is for the children of the militaries that are deployed right now. There was this morning in the paper, an article, part of another contingency of MCB3 that just left to join the rest of theirs. And we are working with several of them on the base, obviously, for the deployed children because, and some of them have one spouse or even both, or you know, both of them could be deployed, the way it works nowadays.
Absolutely.
And so, so thank you very much.
Thank you so much. And would you stay there and please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, I would. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you so much.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I could, just while we have the moment of inspiration speaker here and the other veterans here. I just wanted to make sure the veterans in the room know that today at 10:30, we're going to be celebrating the 25th anniversary of the construction of the veterans memorial that we have out here at the corner of Victoria and Telephone. If you want to be here, great, and if you're busy, that's fine. But mostly I just wanted to make sure you are aware that we will be celebrating very briefly that 25th anniversary of that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Again, thank you very much Dennis for coming in. Okay, we're going to move to adopt the minutes that have been supplied to us by the clerk. Move the prudence. The motion?
Second.
And the second?
We're up past eight now.
Yeah, moving along. And that is a vote, vote.
Thank you.
Unanimous adoption, thank you. Agenda review, Madam CEO.
Yes, Madam Chair, there's an addendum item, a time certain, item 38, which is Public Hearing Regarding Adoption of Ventura County Fire Protection District Ordinance Number 27. And that has been posted and provided to your board. Time certain, agenda, item 21, there is a revised ordinance. And those have been posted and you should receive copies.
Okay, anything else on agenda? I'd like to just suggest that we will handle item, where did it go? Item 17 and 21 together. So 17 is a time certain, and 10 and 21 is a 10:30, so we'll put those close together because they are certainly related. Okay, agenda reviewed and adoption of the agenda as revised?
So moved.
The motion?
Second.
Please vote. Okay, and that passes unanimously. Consent agenda items 10 to 15? Any questions?
Move the consent calendar?
Okay. Motion and a second to move the consent calendar? And that passes unanimously. Okay. Now at this time, we have the opportunity for public comments. And Madam Clerk, do we have? Okay, Dave Betty, welcome.
Thank you.
And if we've got, and David Ha, Richard Camacho, Bob Holmes, oh, okay.
Come on up. Come on up. Come on up. Give it to him.
Welcome, welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Good morning, Ms. Long. Supervisors, good morning. Very good. Thank you, thank you. We're here to say thank you for all of you for, you know, recently in August, we had the Vietnam vets moving while coming to Ventura County. And a lot of folks are out there, and as always, Ms. Long, you always touch a lot of people's hearts, and everything you do for us, and you've done for years, and you've always been there for us, and there isn't a Vietnam vet, a World War II vet, or any other veteran that doesn't have tremendous amount of respect for you and everybody in here. And so we would like to present you with a plaque. So we're a little bit late, but you know, we're trying to catch up our sleep from the wall, but we saved the best for last, which is you, Ms. Long. And we want to thank you, and we want to present you with this plaque in appreciation for your generous support to the Vietnam veterans of Ventura County.
Nice.
And we figured, well, a plaque would be better than a picture of us on the wall. But we wanted to thank you for everything you've done for us.
We have to brush it out. Thank you. Come on guys, come on, come on. And we brought in Miss Marissa Mako sitting over there with us, kind enough to join us.
Okay. All right, ready? One, two, and one more. Okay, one, two, and three. Let's take one more. Two and three. Great, thank you.
This is very touching. My brother was a Vietnam veteran, my husband's a Vietnam veteran, and it is obviously something very beautiful. Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Dennis, thank you again, and Linda, thank you. Okay, that takes care of, is that, oh, George, Adriana Pace? Hope I didn't jump, oh, Lorraine Brown too. I'm not quite sure who it was. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Adriana Pace. I grew up and currently live in Ventura County. I'm here today to ask for your support for all VCMC Satellite Clinic employees. As a former clinic manager, I know firsthand the frustration employees experience at not having a voice within the clinic system to address the various clinic issues and staff problems. Large corporations have lobbyists to speak for them. Healthcare workers, specifically those within the satellite clinic system, have no one to represent them if not for the unions. As an office manager, I've seen the difference between happy, secure employees and the quality of work they produce, as opposed to fearful and frustrated employees who never know what they can expect from management on a day-to-day basis. By empowering the individual clinic staff members and allowing them to be a part of the decision-making process, they will begin to feel they have a voice and their concerns will be heard without fear of retaliation. They can then provide better care for their patients while working in a positive environment where they know their concerns will not be ignored. As the mother of a current clinic employee, I hear on a regular basis about the many concerns of the clinic employees. These concerns strongly dictate the importance of no delays in the purb process to be allowed to continue. It dictates the importance of no delays in allowing the purb process to continue, that being the card check process. Enough taxpayer dollars have already been spent, excuse me, proving the county is indeed a joint employer with the satellite clinics. Please do not waste any of the taxpayer dollars on pointless delays. Respect the card check process. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name's Lorraine Brown. I'm a property owner at 12507 Conex Stein Road in Upper Ojai.
Madam Chair, could you just pull those two microphones a little closer together?
At the top.
Just at the top, yeah, that's it.
Is there a reverb?
Yeah, we can hear you better.
Okay. Shall I begin again? Okay. I want to address CUP application LU 0036 for a wedding venue at 12695 Conex Stein Road. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to operate a commercial event venue hosting up to 30 outdoor events per year on a 10-acre parcel at the end of a narrow road that winds through Chaparral. Operations of this sort are only permitted via a conditional use application procedure whereby planning and various county departments evaluate the project and determine if conditions need to be imposed to assure compliance with their regulations and that the character of the community is not adversely affected by allowing an otherwise prohibited use. The event facility's conditional use was introduced to allow another income stream to family farmers to help maintain their independent farming operations. The property in question does not engage in any agricultural activities, and although three of the four abutting properties are agricultural in nature, two avocado ranches and a cattle ranch, none of the 25 properties served by one and a half miles of Conex Stein Road between Route 150 and the subject property is a farm. The predominant character of the community is residential, not agricultural. Per the county's initial study issued on October 29th, only two conditions were proposed to address, excuse me, community character. Limits on the lights in a new 138-car parking area out of concern for local wildlife, and a requirement that local farmers modify any spraying activities to not adversely impact the wedding guests. The second is a condition that serves to support the proposed use. So far, no conditions address the comfort nor the rights of the existing community residents. I do not understand how the introduction of 250 people in 138 cars to a dead-end street potentially every weekend for seven and a half months of the year for outdoor events with amplified sound until 11:30 at night can be viewed as an activity without significant impact to the character of a residential neighborhood. Additionally, evaluating the noise impact of events by measuring decibels at the source without taking into account that the topographic nature of the community is not flat, open agricultural fields, but hills, creeks, and crisscrossing canyons misses the fact that neighbors on the other side of Route 50, excuse me, Route 150, a full mile from the subject property heard and could understand every word the MC said during the numerous non-permitted events the applicants hosted for three years until neighborhood complaints forced them to apply for a CUP. Is it fair that 30 weekends a year residents on the other side of the valley should be forced to be introduced to the new bride and groom? Should they have to listen to the fond reminiscences and good wishes of everyone who wishes to take the microphone? We are not hypothesizing that this is going to be a nuisance. We know it to be a nuisance. We learned last weekend that an attorney who lives on Cesar Road, at least a mile to the west of the site, has been mobilizing his own group to fight the great ranting of the CUP on noise concerns alone. This is a matter of interest not only to the residents of Conex Stein Road, but to your constituents throughout much of Upper Ojai. And so far, I've only discussed noise. There are serious concerns about light, traffic, and not least of all, the increased risk of fire that the presence of 250 people, unaccustomed to the challenges and responsibilities posed by Chaparral, would create 30 times a year. I don't think it is an exaggeration to suggest that the health and safety of the greater Ojai and Santa Paula communities are at issue here. I and my friends and neighbors in Upper Ojai intend to vigorously challenge the nature of the county's review of this application and to demand that our very real concerns be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Madam Chair, if I could just, we had a chance, just to be aware, we had a chance to talk with the speaker that came last week from Conex Stein Road. I assume you're in communication with him?
Yes.
If not, feel free to contact my office, but we're very interested in the concerns that you guys have been expressing here. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Adriana Pace? Oh, I'm sorry, you brought her to talk. Thank you. George Lewis? Out of order on my scroll, sorry.
Good morning. My name is George Lewis. I'm with the Veterans for Peace in Ventura Chapter. I'm the treasurer. And I'm here on behalf of the Ventura County Chapter 112 of the Veterans for Peace, which serves the Ventura County area through student education, veteran outreach, and public tabling events. To express my organization's absolute solidarity with the Ventura County Medical Center, VCMC Satellites, clinic workers and their effort to form a union with SEIU Local 721. By joining together in the SEIU Local 721, the VCMA Satellite Clinic workers will be able to work together with the administration to improve their clinic and quality of care they provide to the members of the community. The VCMC Satellite workers will be able to negotiate with the management to make improvements in their wages, benefits, and working conditions. We, the Veterans for Peace, support the VCMC Satellite workers and their efforts to gain a voice at work to achieve quality community health services. We wish to ask that you do not delay the Satellite Clinic Union recognition and follow the car check process. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'd like to submit this as...
You sure you can, you wish, sure?
Okay.
Okay, and I believe that completes our request for public comment. I didn't have any other on the list. Correct? Okay. Okay, at this time, we will be going to board comments, and if we might, board members, I'd like to ask that, I will go first with board comments today. Thank you. I have a list to adjourn in memory of that I'd like to put forward. And then I invited Mark Long to come into the boardroom this morning to give us an update. It seems like, please step forward, our clerk recorder and elections chief, and to give us an update. I was thinking about this this morning, it seemed like it was weeks ago, but it was just a week ago.
It was just a week ago.
And I know that there's been much written and said, and just thought it would be a good time for you to give us a brief update of where we stand, so.
Thank you Chair Long, and good morning to you, honorable members of the board. Good morning, Mrs. Robinson. Yes, it was, it was a week ago this morning, in fact, that we conducted election here in Ventura County. It's nice timeliness this morning that we had our veterans here, symbolic of what we keep dear here in conducting our elections and our democratic process. That morning, we opened up, for lack of a better term, 357 stores manned by about 1,400 employees. In the same time, going along with that analogy, we had 192 communities being served by vote by mail. And a week later, we've had 248,000 people in some chains that have voted, a 58.5% turnout to date. When I came to your board previously, we had estimated a 55 to a 60% turnout. That was just pure luck that we were able to guess that, I remember telling a reporter that I have less empirical data than a television weathercaster to forecast these things, and somehow we got it right this time. But it's never enough. I am not happy, we need 100% turnout, but this is a pretty good turnout, and we're very pleased. We had 155 ballot types, and a whole lot of folks working very hard to turn this election around very quickly, and we're in the midst of that right now. We're seven days out, we're well ahead of where we've been in the past. One of the things I'm particularly proud of, and I want to compliment the board on, and to get back to you in terms of the purchase of the two voting machines that were primarily designed for the vote by mail voter. We made history this time. I challenged staff and they rose to the occasion. I said, "I wanted to have every vote by mail ballot that we had in-house on Election Day counted." They answered the call. We reported for the very first time 85,000 vote by mail ballots results on our first release on Election Night. We actually had 96,000 that were signature verified, but we didn't have enough time to be able to include those because the last couple of days prior to election, we had a tremendous onslaught of vote by mail ballots that hit our office. So what is going on today? We are in the midst of a vote no vote, which is required by law to give folks credit for the votes that they voted, and that's a manual process. We're done with the machine processing for the most part. Now we move into the manual process. Vote by, vote no vote is taking place now. We're clearing up a few votes, signature verification-wise, that we're trying to clear to make sure that those folks are actually voters, and that's required by law. And we're in the midst of our 1% tally, where we hand tally 1% of all the precincts in the county to verify that the election's results were complete. Now, this process that we're in right now will take, I think, best guess, I'm here with Tracy Sossida, the Assistant Register of Voters, and Jim Becker. We're looking at Thursday. Once we complete this process, then we can get into the provisional ballots. We have about 10,000 provisional ballots that are out there. Now, not all those provisional ballots, as you all know, are going to result in votes, but we can't even look at them by law until we finish the process that we're in right now. So I know I mentioned the machines, and we talked about the machines for a second, but I really need to, I really need to point to our folks in elections. We have got some great folks, and I've got lots of public interest stories, but there's a couple of them, I think, that come to the surface here. We have our own version of a Chilean miner downstairs in an election. We've been working very hard. We have crews working on both of those machines. We have one employee... We have one employee who had a raging eye infection that we could not get her to go to the doctor because she was so focused, this is on a signature verification and precinct sorter machine, that she would not go to the doctor. We finally had to force her to go to the doctor. Everybody was working 12-plus-hour shifts. She turned, she finally went to the doctor, got some treatment, come back the next morning to find the room that she was working in in complete darkness, and she improvised with her crew, turned on flashlights, and continued to run ballots as we went along, just to make sure that they were going to try to meet the goal to turn this election around in record time, and we are on pace for that right now. Another human interest story, we've had all of our employees there. I'm so proud of them and the way that they look at their service. 12, 13-hour employee, a young woman who's got to get home to her, a young toddler, on the phone. I'm down, and I walk by her, and I hear her say that, "I would be happy to drop that ballot off at your house." It was an elderly voter who hadn't been to her mailbox in a couple of days, hadn't received her vote-by-mail ballot, and yet, after working a long shift like that, she was going to drop that ballot by that person's home on her own time. And that's what our folks are doing downstairs. We are, I know that the big question is going to be is when we're going to certify this election. The last election, in June, we did very, very well, and came back in 17 days with a certification. This election's a lot more complex. The turnout, much greater, 80-plus percent we had back in November. I think we are going to probably be able to take a two-ballot election, which is twice the work for elections officials, and probably our goal is to come in at 17 days, which would be just unheard of. And so we're on track to do that. It's due to the good work of the men and women of the Elections Division, and we're working very hard to try to do that. So for purposes of your dates, and I don't want to get killed or shot in the back, but for my staff, we're looking at November 19th. That'll put us at 17 days, where the state actually gives us until November 30th to complete it. In communication with the Secretary of State's office yesterday, we are well ahead of other counties in what we're doing here. And I have to say that, and give credit to, number one, the purchase of the machines, and, number two, the fine work that our men and women are doing. On a side note, I wanted to talk a little bit about, and get back to you, about the vote-by-mail drop boxes and ballots. I think that the most effective thing that we have out there in terms of the drop-off in the remote locations, without question, is the city clerks' offices that we've had that are accepting our ballots throughout the county. We've had, I think, about 3,700 votes that have been dropped off at our drop locations. Number one, Camarillo, they had 196. Number two, Ojai, 189. Number three, Oxnard, 156. By far and away, that's the best. Our biggest box that we have, that had 2,500 votes, was right out front here in the Hall of Administration. Now, our two fire stations that we added to, to be discussed at a later time. We didn't have a whole lot of votes there, about 35 or so votes, so we want to take a look at that. 35 votes we'll take, want to take a look at that to see if that's something that we'll explore, and I will be talking to each one of you individually for that, so we can explore that. That's a quick snapshot in time. I'm surprised that my voice has lasted. I'm available for questions, and I appreciate the opportunity to come in this morning.
Well, I appreciate the update. It's very important to us, so. Supervisor, questions?
Thank you. I do have two questions, and one, a compliment. Really appreciate hearing about how hard you and your staff are working, and I think it's just great for the public to have that sense that things are moving really promptly in terms of the counting of the votes, so congratulations to everybody there. You talked about you're going to turn to the provisional ballots here, and I get people that call in my office, and could you just walk us through, how do you handle provisional ballots, and do the candidates that are in the close races get to have observers as you're making decisions about provisional ballots? What's the transparency process with provisional ballots?
Great question. We've had observers throughout the entire process. A grand jury has been in. Anybody that wants to observe, I was at a planning commission last night with an individual that was in a very close race and invited him down to take a look. The provisional ballots for us in the Register of Voters office is the just-in-case ballot, and that's a good thing. That's a good thing for the public. I forgot my ballot. I'm not sure if I voted or not. I'm not sure if I'm registered. I'm not sure if I'm at the right polling place. So from that perspective, we like to see provisional ballots. The offside to that is there are a lot of work, but that's the price of doing business. And provisional ballots is a manual process, basically, that we look at, is this person registered to vote, and is this a good, is it a good vote, are they registered to vote? And that's all, really, there's no mystery about a provisional ballot. And certainly, we would like to encourage anybody that wants to see. It's a transparent process, and it's important, particularly for people that are in close races.
So they just send a representative and work it out with you?
Send a representative down.
And each time you go to one that's in their particular district?
Absolutely, and we've had a plethora of folks in observing our operations.
And then, had this question come up yesterday, because, you know, you pre-count the absentee ballots that come in early, and you release those results at 8:05. Those are pre-counted, though, before Election Day?
What happens is, seven days before Election Day, the law allows you to take the signature-verified ballots and actually scan the results into a computer. They're not tabulated. The computer just sees raw data. And at 8 o'clock that night, we combine two software programs, and that turns into a vote.
So before 8 o'clock, nobody has any idea what any of those AB ballots have vindicated?
No, sir.
Okay, except for if somebody glanced at one while it was going through the machine, but there wouldn't, nobody has a sense of what the totals are?
No, no.
Okay, that doesn't get computed. All right, that's helpful for the public.
And that's good for all of us.
It is, right.
And I'm not a techie, but what the computer sees in one, what the computer sees in one program that doesn't equate to a vote in the other, what it just reads is raw data that comes off of two separate cards in this case.
And nobody has access to?
Nobody has access to that either.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Supervisor.
Chair, I also want to thank your staff, you know, for doing an excellent job. The following day, I got a call from the Star Reporter that there was some concerns in Oxnard about the, why, you know, the count was so late. But after talking to Jim Becker, you know, and I didn't get to call Becky because I know Jim was saying that she knows most of everything, but he answered my question. The question was what happened to Oxnard, and my understanding is that in Oxnard, you have a regional collection center, and Oxnard has probably the most precincts, you know, that other cities have, and they were all collected in this one regional center, and by the, some of the folks were late bringing their ballots to that center. And by the time they got into the truck and they were escorted by the deputies here to the center, you had a row of people that, in line, waiting to come in. So after that explanation, the reporter understood what was happening, as opposed to blaming the election office here for the late counting for the Oxnard ballots. But I just wanted to share with him, thank Jim and your office and Becky, you know, for a good job.
Thank you, Chair, and I'm glad that you brought that up. There was that that was reported. There's no mystery to it at all, and you're right that Oxnard had three trucks that came to the election center that night, and it's really a first-come, first-served thing. And the good thing was that we had lots of polling places that closed late because of long lines. That's a good thing for me. And when all of those were complete, they came to the center, and they just took their place in line, so.
And one of the things that the reporter mentioned to me, and they were guarded by the deputies, is absolutely, they were right there with them.
Absolutely.
To the center.
We've actually added, we've actually internally done, made some adjustments in terms of how we look at those things, based on my background, but yes, everybody's been around for many elections would know that a load in the back of this building is not an unusual thing. It's a good thing. It means that democracy is on the roll, so.
Okay. No further.
Just quick, yeah, had the opportunity to be down there at 8 and watch that, and you're right, and I was just telling Linda, East County's always last. They got to further to drive and collect those, so I think that, yeah, same questions come from people, but.
Express line.
Express line, is that what it is? But I, too, was very impressed with Tracy and all the stuff that she was doing, and Jim, and your people were tremendous down there. It was great. You think about it, how much faster this was. I know we talked about, we're just so impatient for these votes, but I don't know what, was it almost twice as many, or at least a third many absentees were done instantly at 8 o'clock than were at the election before?
Correct.
And you said it's a double ballot? I mean, so there's a lot of things that went on very, very well.
That, yeah, we, they worked really hard, and I would be remiss as a leader. Machines are one thing, but people run machines, and it's the people that made the difference, augmented by the machines.
Well, it was interesting. I saw some people, because the machines didn't do everything, they had to readjust certain things to make those, and people were finding ways to do that. So I was really impressed with that. The other thing I did last night was, I was going through the statewide stuff, and you talk about turnout. We were number two with anybody who cast more than 200,000 votes in the county. Only Santa Clara County had more than our turnout, so we've done a pretty good job of getting people out to the ballots. That's, I think they had 60, and we had 58.5 or something like that, so that's pretty good.
Very proud of them, and about ready to go back down there and continue to work. Thank you.
Well, appreciate the update and the excellent work by everyone in the Elections Division, Tracy and Jim, your leadership, and thank you for the update on this.
Thank you.
But forward to talking with you a little bit about the pilots of the, you know, other sites. I'm still interested in the Santa Clara Valley.
Thank you.
And I'll say, one of the things we can always say about you, Mark, is that you won't get white hair over this job.
No. What I'm trying to do now is I'm trying to keep it.
Good job. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate the update. Thank you. Okay, board members, that's the, I didn't have any further comments to make, so we'll go down to Supervisor Forrest. We're still under board comments.
Well, thank you. Appreciate you bringing that. It's always good news to hear that stuff. I'd like to adjourn in memory of the people on this list, and just make a comment on our, talk about elections, what happened. It was interesting to see our elections this time. Matter of fact, Supervisor Bennett and I talked this last Tuesday about what we thought would change, and I think it was different than both of us thought, in some senses. It's, let me just tell you, from Republican standpoint, Democrats hadn't had this least amount of seats since 1947. So the Republicans are, you know, the beneficiary of this, but let me tell you also, I, the greatest beneficiary of this is we, the people. The people have decided that they're going to speak up in what they believe, and I think that was the most important. And I hope that this leadership in the House will remember who's really accountable, which is the people, and that we're accountable to the people. So I'm not, as a Republican, I'm not excited, all the Republicans did this, I'm more excited that every single individual got out and voted, because I'm going to tell you, Republicans have done just as bad of things as both parties, so I think that's important, that we do that, and I'm excited to see what's going to happen. But also, it was, here in California, it was a different story, but some people said, oh, some of the people in California were, you know, it's just, the light switch was off. And I don't think that's true. I think there was a couple other things. I saw like the $18 for the parks. People said, "We're just not interested in spending any more money." And it's interesting, Jerry Brown had said that. Jerry Brown said that, "Looks like the people here in California are not in the mood for any new taxes." We saw the gerrymandering. They agreed that we don't want politicians making up their own, you know, districts for their own personal gains, and I thought that was pretty interesting. People were paying attention. The two-thirds vote for the budget. I think people are frustrated with the representation in Sacramento, and we just want a budget. We want something done, we want it done now. But the other thing, too, is interesting, was the two-thirds vote on fees. I think it's come to a point where a lot of the people, I know the people are just frustrated and don't trust the politicians with their money, and we saw that, even though we know that's going to be a little bit more difficult for all of us to have to deal with things here, but they're concerned with that. And with our new governor-elect, I'm hoping that we have some real opportunity. He does have a lot of experience, a lot of background, and that he can come in during very difficult times, because I do believe that what's happened around the country with a lot of different governors, and I think it was 680 new people Republicans brought into office, they're going to be under the mandate to make some changes, as other governors recently have done. Look at Virginia, where McDonald came in with a $2 billion, two-plus, $2.5 billion budget deficit, now has $250 million surplus. We're going to have to make some changes to get into that place, because we are in very difficult times, and we need some great leadership to make that. So I'm going to be on Brown's side to hope and encourage him to make that happen for all of us who live in this state, so. Thank you.
Supervisor Forrest.
Thank you. Well, one thing that I really came away from with this election is how important it is to vote. We have over 102,000 votes that were cast in the city council election in Thousand Oaks, and the third and fourth place finishers, although it's not quite finished yet, are just, you know, 50 to 70 votes apart. So it's so important, each and every vote that we get, and it's really important that everybody vote, and unfortunately, that isn't the case. And you just think, what can we do to instill that really obligation into people? And I think maybe at the high school level, when you turn 18, that you have the honor of being able to cast the ballot. That really needs to be put into people's heads, because it's, to me, it is, it's a real shame that so many don't vote. I have two things to report. One is that the Mental Health Board has openings in each of the supervisors' districts except mine, and I really want to encourage you all to appoint, and appoint people who want to be active, and they particularly are also looking for Hispanic and Asian members, too. But whatever you select will be great. We just hope you will select, and that those individuals will want to serve and do the hard work that the Mental Health Board does. I know you put an opening like that in the paper, and you'll get lots and lots of people who want to serve, so I do encourage you to get those people appointed. The second thing I wanted to report back is, and I am a closing in honor, a wonderful man in my district, George Sparky Anderson. Sparky Anderson was the only manager in baseball that won both a World Series and the National and the American League. One of the nicest people you could meet, and it was an honor to call him a friend. I want to read what his Hall of Fame plaque reads. It says, "Revered and treasured by his players for his humility, humanity, eternal optimism, and knowledge of the game." And that really sums him up well, so I'll end with that, and I know we all miss him.
Amazing man. Being a former Detroit Tiger fan, I still cheer him on. Supervisor Eric also?
Yeah, I'd like to adjourn in memory of this folks here, and I have a couple of items that I'd like to report. You know, I'm going to participate in talking about veterans, you know, which I think is extremely important. At the Plaza Park Veterans Ceremony on Thursday, which I have for the last 14 years, and then also, my staff is attending a veteran ceremony today over on Del Norte in 101 with the Perez family funeral services, and they're asking for the folks that are watching to bring a toy, to bring a toy for the children. And also, my staff is going to attend Thursday morning, like all of us will, the flag ceremony by the flagman over at River Ridge in Oxnard. You know, the flagman is a US flagman that provides our flags, US flags. And also, we are going to have a ceremony over at the Nyland Annex. We're now getting a portable unit, too. We're going to have a ribbon cut here in the next couple of days. This is for the youth and family programs there at Nyland Acres. You know, we continue to work with our youth there. And additionally, we, Saturday, as you know, Chairman Long, we're having the Community Partnership Summit in Oxnard, and this is the, for family and youth workshops. If anybody wants to attend, it's going to start at 9:00 AM in the morning, and this is the Oxnard Alliance for Community Service. And I think, Long, you're the chair with, or co-chair with Holden. And also, today, you know, my staff is, because I won't be able to be there, is presenting 30 certificates to the seniors' Celebration for Life Ceremony over in Oxnard, and the seniors are between 80 and 90 years old, which are really individuals that have done a lot of good work for the community over in Oxnard. So that's all.
Thank you. Supervisor Bennett.
Yes, first, I'd like to just mention again, it's something that we've said here at the boardroom in response to the comments about the union and efforts, and that is that this board has, I think, consistently supported collective bargaining rights for workers, and the question simply is, who do you collectively bargain? Is it with the clinic managers and owners, or is it with the county? And that's where the question is, but certainly in terms of having workers be represented to collective bargaining, that's a position that we've consistently been supportive of. The second... that's a position that we've consistently been supportive of. The second thing is, I'd like to make sure all the Board members know that Roberta Rodriguez lost her aunt and Cecilia Ruiz passed away, lifelong resident of Ventura. So, Roberta, we hope your family is doing well there. All right. I'd like to point out a few, a few other things. I attended Help of Ojai's annual membership meeting and where they do their annual report, head their board of directors, et cetera. It's an organization that's gone through a tough time like all of these nonprofit organizations. Just really happy to report that they're in the black, they've turned things around at Help of Ojai. We have sort of a relationship with them as a result of their west campus, which was formerly our honor farm. Things are looking up in terms of Help of Ojai and what they're doing. But last night, you know, this incredible organization, you know, it's 25,000 people in the Ojai Valley. There's only one nonprofit social service organization in the Ojai Valley and that's Help of Ojai. It's really a place where everybody's come together. As I said, a lot of great volunteers. They showcased one volunteer. She's 101 years old and twice a month, she still volunteers with Help of Ojai. She has two things that she does every month and it really keeps her going. So something else I'd just point out to you, Help of Ojai has a place where people who are going through dementia and Alzheimer's can be dropped off in the morning and they watch them all day so that families can care for people who are going through that tragic and very difficult time and still be able to get to work, get the groceries done, et cetera, because it's, can be debilitating for a family to have somebody in that situation. I mean, that's, is truly a remarkable organization. I just want to thank the Board for the support they've given Help of Ojai in the past. And it's, it is one of the premier organizations in Ventura County. Also had the privilege at the other end to go to the Boys and Girls Club fundraiser on Saturday night. It was a great fundraiser, worked out real well. Had the pleasure of sitting next to Sheriff-elect Jeff Dean and Stan Mantooth. So it had a real overall county feel. But that Boys and Girls Club, you know, we're certainly in partnership with them, with the Satacui production. But that's, that's a group that is really hustling. People stepping up. They had to stand up for Boys and Girls Club and a couple of people stood up for $5,000, just bang, right there on the spot. But last year, they raised over $175,000 and I'm sure they came close to that again this year. So there are people out there doing really good things. The final thing I would like to just mention is the role of money in the past election, I mentioned it last week, is something that really concerns me. The amount of money that we will never know what the source is, is probably something that this country is unified behind and thinking that's not good. I think everybody says we ought to know where the money is coming from. And we don't have the kind of disclosure at the federal level that we really should. And just in preparation, I know you're really looking forward to this. I'm going to do a short PowerPoint at my next thing about what's been happening with the tax structure in the state of California lately in terms of business taxes versus personal taxes, et cetera. So, thank you very much.
Next week?
Next week.
Preview? Right. Can we bring popcorn?
There you go.
Okay, thank you, Board members. And I have a couple other things I forgot to mention and I'm going to take time to do that real quick here. One was Sunday, this is October, this is November. Anyway, we have acknowledged and we work with the homeless throughout our county. And on Sunday, there was the Mini Mansions Bowl of Hope fundraiser. It really was an exciting one. They had a tremendous turnout. Supervisor Foy served soup, I served soup, and they just had a whole list of folks serving soup for the three hours. And I know they did much better than they did last year. They were very pleased with the venue and just some wonderful soup. So it was, it really was a fun event and they do such good work for homeless in our county. So I wanted to give them a congratulations on their event. And also, on Sunday, I went out to Fillmore in the afternoon and Fillmore and Santa Paula came together and put on a dinner for the football teams of Fillmore and Santa Paula. And on this Friday is the big game. It's the 100th game of those, that rivalry, those two teams. And they are sold out. You won't even be able to get in there to see it. It is going to be on Time Warner and they're all excited. And it was just really nice of the leadership of those two communities to come together and sponsor this dinner for the team and the cheerleaders and the pep squad. And it was a full house and it was fun. And the history of the rivalry to hear it was quite fun. Good, just good feeling with our youth. And then lastly, to also thank all of you for being here. And I know that you're going to be participating in Veterans Day events. And for every one of us, take a time on Thursday to thank a veteran for their service. So that concludes our Board comments. And we have time now to go to our regular agenda and we'll start out with item 31, our Auditor Controller.
Thank you, Board members. You've seen this item before. And this is the report back for completing the annual review of the information that was provided for in the Exhibits 1, 2, and 3 regarding the County of Ventura developer fees. We're recommending that you make a finding that the fees and the fee purposes that are identified in Exhibit 1 are reasonable and have a relationship to the, between the fee and the purpose and that you find that anticipated fund sources, amounts, and dates of receipt of funding to complete the projects and the date of construction commencement are, as identified in the Government Code sections. If you have any questions, we've asked for departments to have their fiscal officers available to respond to any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from the Board members? This is, been before us earlier. This is to take the recommended actions. Any questions? Okay, pleasure to the Board.
Move the recommended action.
Motion and second to adopt the recommended actions. Please vote. And that item has been approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have item 32, Public Works Watershed Protection District. Good morning, Mrs. Camacho.
Well, slight technical difficulty, but I think we could move ahead and move forward. Good morning, Board members. Chair Long, Ms. Robinson. For the record, my name is Norma Camacho, Director of the Watershed Protection District. Here with me today is Pam Lindsay, who is the Project Manager for the Ojai Valley Trailhead Project, which we have for you here today. What we'd like to do is obtain your approval for the plans and specification and basically to award the construction contract for this particular project. Now, if I could have the next slide? Thank you. As part of the Prof. 50 grant funding, there were two basic components that was funded as part of this project. One is to develop a recreational trailhead and the other is to provide giant reed removal in the Ventura River watershed. We received approximately $1.2 million in June of 2009 and this was granted to us by the California Natural Resources Agency. And basically, this serves as the recreational component of the overall Matilla Dam ecosystem restoration project. And as you can see, of the $1.2 million that was granted to us, a little over $400,000 was allocated to the trailhead project with the balance basically allocated to giant reed removal. There was also approximately $300,000, a little over $300,000. That was the district match as part of this project. Next slide. We have a number of proposed project components, but just to give you a sense of where the project is located, we're looking at the Ojai area around the old Baldwin Road and Highway 150 intersection near the Ojai Valley Organics facility, nearby adjacent to that. And basically, what we're proposing on doing is constructing a little less than an acre of a basically rustic parking area for equestrian trailers and buses. We're going to also provide vehicular parking in the area and also provide ADA accessible parking spaces. At the site, we'll also have a kiosk with public information, a lot of the natural resources information. There are a number of amenities that will be provided at the site as well. But also, a really excellent ADA accessible paved trail is going to be part of this project, which we're really proud that we could incorporate into this project. Next slide. This is basically giving you a site plan of the equestrian parking area, the vehicular parking area, the trailhead, the ADA parking. And at the upper right corner, you can see the ADA trailhead or the trail that we're proposing as part of this project. Next slide. Bid opening was on October 14th. We received a total of nine bids. The winning bidder was Smiley Engineering Construction at approximately $173,000, which was below our engineer's estimate for the project. So we are running below project costs and staying within the bounds of the grant at this point in time. Next slide. As part of this project, we don't have to obtain any additional property or right-of-wake, which is a very good thing. And all the construction funds have been budgeted and will be reimbursable once we complete construction. We're looking at a start date of December of 2010. And construction is going to be relatively short, between two to three months. Next slide. So basically, we're requestfully, we're requesting respectfully that the Board approve the file of recommendations for this project and to basically authorize the Director of Public Works to move forward to execute the contract. And I'm here to answer any questions on the project, if you have any.
Okay, are there any questions?
No questions.
Don't have any requests to speak on this, so before the Board.
It's just, it's another, it's another good project that's out there. I mean, the Arundo removal and now this. And there are many ancillary benefits to the removal of Matilla Dam, many of which were reaping way before Matilla Dam ever was going to get removed. This is just another example of people benefiting the Ojai Valley. Appreciate the work of Watershed Protection District. Lots of, lots of challenges as you try to work on a project like this and stuff. And so I'd like to move the recommended action.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Please vote. And that passes unanimously. Thank you for the excellent work on that.
Thank you very much, Norma.
Item 33 is a Water Works District item regarding sewer improvements in Piru. Good morning, Mr. Pacala.
Good morning, Chair Long, Members of the Board, Mrs. Robinson. I'm Eddie Pacala with Water and Sanitation Department of the Public Works Agency. Ventura County Water Works District Number 16 provides sanitation services to the community of Piru. As your Board is aware, District recently constructed a new wastewater treatment plant and placed into operation. Cabrillo Economic Development Corporation has plans to construct a 66-unit affordable multifamily development within the District Service area for the farmworker families. And Cabrillo has executed a contract install for the construction of the proposed sewer improvement for this development. We are requesting that your Board approve the contract and authorize the Chair to execute the contract. That concludes my verbal presentation. I'll be glad to take any questions you might have.
Are there any questions?
Only that Cabrillo continues to do good work, you know, for the movement.
They do. And Piru is very, very excited about this project and it will, it'll take a piece of property that had history and still make it, turn it into something that's very important to the community. Yes. I'd like to move the recommended action. And there's a second to do that. And we'll take a vote here. Nope, I'm sorry. I thought I did. Push that, sorry. Okay, that passes.
Thank you.
On a four vote, an absentee. And thank you, Mr. Pacala. Okay, item 34, the Sheriff's Department.
Good morning, Members of the Board, Chair Long, Ms. Robinson. I'm here seeking authorization for the Auditor to increase appropriations and the unanticipated revenue to purchase a mobile fingerprint identification system. The Board, on October 2002, approved a resolution enabling Ventura County to begin the collection of a dollar fee from every vehicle registered within this county per the vehicle code. This section specifies that these funds be collected, used exclusively for programs that enhance the capacity for local law enforcement to provide automated, fixed, and mobile fingerprint identification. Since 2003, the Board has authorized the purchase of equipment that has provided a countywide network for fingerprint collection and identification. This is for all areas of the county, all police stations, contract, and not for the sheriff. We are now asking to enlarge the system with the mobile capture devices from 20 that we've had a, let's say, experiment with. That experiment has concluded and it's been so successful that within eight seconds, we can now get a fingerprint match on someone that stopped in our county that has no identification with them or the officer feels they provided false identification. So there's no interference with the movements of citizens when stopped for a simple traffic violation to identify if that person is who they say they are. These systems will go to every patrol car in the county, notwithstanding Department, Oxnard, Ventura, CME, all the sheriff jurisdiction, and all of our contract cities. The initial startup for this is approximately $470,000 with a reoccurring cost of $122,000 to serve the licensing and maintenance for the system to go forward. I also brought a couple experts to the plan, retired Commander Joe Harwell and our Captain Chris Lathrup, if you have any detailed questions about this project.
Questions, yes.
It's incredible use of technology and I'm sure it'll be really helpful. The question I have is whether you can require someone to give a thumbprint.
When they're detained and there's a question of their identity, yes, we can.
And that's that, and being detained would be just a normal traffic stop?
It could be as simple as a traffic stop or they could be detained because they're suspect in criminal activity.
I know, I want to thank you. I know this is a mobile fingerprinting unit, but I also want to commend, you know, the rest of the Sheriff's Department. I had the pleasure of taking a tour of the jail here and was looking at the DNA technology and the fingerprint technology that you have there. And I think this is going to help the total system, you know, for fingerprinting and just assisting and making sure that those folks are the people that we're looking for or maybe they might have the prints there of, that can help the whole department anyway. But I just, I just want to commend you for the work that you're doing, the whole Sheriff's Department. It was an excellent tour and I want to thank Linda Oxnard and also Tennyson for the tour that we had there at the jail. And I want to commend you guys for the good work.
Thank you very much. I'll pass your comments on to Dave and Linda.
Yeah, that was a great tour. I mean, I wouldn't want to be there, but, but the facility is just run very well, nice and clean and just an excellent facility.
Thank you.
Any questions, Supervisor? The, I just have a question. This was originally a pilot and I recall that this also included the ability to help to expedite fingerprinting for people who work with children, for schools, and we've used it for the...
Actually, since 2003, and when I worked in the city of Ojai as their acting chief, I saw it with many people that it stopped their travel to Ventura and all those miles and gas expended for a fingerprint. If you're a volunteer, if you're a childcare worker, if you're a coach. And the placement of these LifeScan stations keep the people in their community and it's a great convenience. And yes, that's one of the beautiful parts of this project. Aside from the identification, make sure we're locking the right people up at jail and not the wrong people through their fingerprint. But yeah, the community value's been used, this $1 assessment.
Good, good to hear that. Yes.
It sounds like it's pretty good. You know, you get the personal rights issues and all this stuff and even Supervisor Parks asked, what happens to that fingerprint after it's been, let's say it goes in for a match, there's no match, is it a stored thing or is it something that, for something later? Or what happens to that?
Well, to start off with, and I might get a little help on it too, the fingerprint match on the mobile device by the patrol field units is only matched against people that have been booked in our jail and/or registrants for sex crimes. It doesn't go to the applicant pool. Once that fingerprint is taken, Chris, Chris was the project manager that did, managed the pilot and put all the comparisons together.
Once the print is taken in the mobile environment and sent in for a verification check against the database, whether it's a hit or a check against the database, whether it's a hit or a no-hit, the hit will bring back demographics and probation warrants and warrants. The no-hit will bring back a no-hit response to the mobile device in the field. But in all cases, that fingerprint, once it's been used, is automatically purged from the system within four hours.
Okay, good. Because I'm sure people would want to be asking that, you know, if I don't have my license, and I'm speeding, or whatever, and, you know, people want to know, I'm not a criminal, but now I guess I became one if I hit my fingerprint.
Well, normally, just so you know, they're allowed to present the verifiable identification as currently a driver's license or an identification card. That's obviously the first form of identification in the last form.
Great, okay, thanks.
My understanding also, you can share that information with other agencies too, you know, that, the fingerprints and so forth.
There are a number of counties that are engaging in information sharing with this kind of biometric identification. Kern County and LA County, for example, just signed an MOU to exchange information system data. Once our system is fully in place, we'll be exploring some of those options as well.
And with the cities also.
Pardon me?
And with the cities also. The cities within Ventura County.
Oh, it's all part of the same system.
The same system.
Yes, sir.
Supervisor?
And the, if it's a hit, obviously, then, you know, you have some verification with the, with the signature, I mean, with the, with the print. If it's not a hit, if another just says, this isn't in the system, you really couldn't keep it in the system because you have no way of verifying it's really that person's, I mean, they may say they're Tom Jones, and then you would, you'd be polluting the system with inaccurate information.
Exactly. The fingerprints have to be tied to some kind of a name record. So even if we were inclined to keep them, there'd be no place to file it or to even search it.
Because you can't, you couldn't verify that, the name that goes with it. Now, what about the people that, as you were talking about, that, you know, that are coming in and, and they're going to be working with children, et cetera? Can they request that that be left on file, or?
Actually, that's left on file as an applicant, but it's not part of the database that a person in the field that fails to present ID or suspect doesn't get compared to the applicant base.
Okay, great.
Yeah, that's a separate database the state holds.
Thank you.
I appreciate that the Sheriff has had a standing committee working on this trust fund and, and, I mean, countywide engagement with law enforcement and others to make sure that these funds are being used wisely and leveraged well, so appreciate that.
And thank you for your participation on the Rand Board.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve the recommended action. Please vote.
Thank you, have a good day.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Passes unanimously, thank you. Okay, item 35 is next up, and that is Supervisor Bennett's item.
Thank you very much. I'd like to move the appointment of Rex Palesi to the Alcohol Drug Advisory Board, and I appreciate Supervisor Parks talking about the openings. We are working on ours on the mental health board. We've generally been full, and we want to make sure we're back at full capacity in terms of our representation there. So I'd like to move this recommended action.
There's a motion and a second. And that passes unanimously. Item 36, I'm carrying this forward for the Childcare Planning Council, and it's the reappointment of folks who've served on the council and interested in continuing their service. This is under education code required to have a local planning council, and the representation of that council is divided between consumers, providers, public agencies, community representatives, and discretionary. So I put forward, again, for adoption, the reappointment of the folks named in this. That's my motion. Oh, motion and a second, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, item 37 is correspondence, receiving file action. There's a motion and a second, receiving file. And that with the vote. Passes unanimously. And then we have the addendum item, which is item 38. It's a public hearing at 11 o'clock, so no, we don't have it. It's time certain, the rest of our items are time certain, so we can take a break. We'll take a break, until 10 o'clock, our fierce 10 o'clock item. Okay.[894.99]
Okay, Board members, if we could come back to the dials and we'll start with our time certain items, with a little reordering of them, but we will be starting first with item sixteen, and that is...is everybody here? No, where'd it go? Yeah, Peter's there. And it's rolling, 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 opening up, opening up slowly, slowly, slowly. Yes, it is adoption permanency month, and that's Supervisor Bennett.
Thank you, thank you very much. And I think, I'm not sure I see everybody in the room, Judge Cody ended up becoming sick today, and Presiding Judge Kevin McGee was going to...
Oh, good.
Oh, there he is. Good, good. All right, good. I was trying to buy a little bit of time to get the judge over here and stuff. But Judge McGee, would you like to come forward, along with Robert Sherman, Ventura County Superior Court Assistant Executive Officer, Cheryl Canizar, Ventura Superior Court Deputy Executive Officer, and then Judy Weber from the Human Services Agency. So, thank you for being here, Judy. We also have with us today two adoptive families. Jessica Buckley and her husband have adopted two children, and they are, they are back in the back. Come on up, all right? Let's do this thing here, right? We want to have these children, do you have your children with you?
They're in school.
All righty. As a teacher, I've...
We're working on perfect...
There you go. Good for you, right? And then also Rob Branchflower and his wife have also adopted children this past year, and if you would come on up. This is a short resolution, so I will read this, but, and they actually brought their children here, all right? Great. And they're Cub Scouts outfits, right? Excellent, great. Well, thank you very much, because this, this process starts with, with, with a side of the story that most of us, that we at the Board have been dealing with way too much in our closed session. And I don't need to go into the details of all of that, but that's where the story starts. But the story ends here, which is the best thing that we can have happen, which is permanency for children, to be in a loving, caring home, and to be able to go on and, and become the men and women that they certainly have the potential for that. So, we really appreciate the families taking the time to be here, appreciate having these three young men here. How about you three grabbing the microphone and giving us your names real quick here? Can you bend that microphone down to us? Right, there you go.
Jacob Branchflower.
All righty.
Anthony Branchflower. Joseph Branchflower.
Wow, great. Thank you very much to all three of you gentlemen. It was pretty tough to kind of get out of school and come today, you didn't want to do that, did you?
We just go after.
Oh, okay.
They're homeschool, so they don't get asked.
All right, great. I was guessing that may have been what was going to be the answer that we were going to get here, right? We have half a million incidents of reported child abuse in Ventura County. Twenty-two thousand children enter the foster care system. Sixty thousand children in California living apart from their families. Forty-five percent of children in foster care in, in California have been away from their families, in out-of-home care for two or more years. Staggering statistics. And the solution is permanency of some sort. And so Judge McGee and the courts and the executive officers of the courts, we really appreciate the role the courts play. And then Judy spent five weeks with us in closed session dealing with the most unhappy side of this, but today is certainly a time to, and the smile is very different than what we, what we normally get to, get to deal with. But for everybody, the parents that are helping to make this happen, this is something that really is important to this Board. The Judicial Council of California is committed to working with the Governor, the Legislature, the local courts and communities to achieve permanency for children who've been abused or neglected, and recognizing that courts and their partner agencies could promote safety, permanency, and well-being for California's children and families by locating and notifying the relatives of children placed in out-of-home care. The Judicial Council in 2009 sponsored Assembly Bill 938, and the Superior Court will place high priority on adoptions and permanencies during the month of November. And they're going to hold a special adoption ceremony on November nineteenth, and they will sponsor Adoption and Permanency Information Fair on November twentieth at the Pacific View Mall. So, this is the month that we try to focus on it, it is the appropriate month, and we are really grateful to have a very effective system here in Ventura County, from the courts down to our Child Protective Services, but, but, and most importantly, to people stepping forward and being willing to open their homes up to these children so that they can go forward. We are, we very much, we take it serious that we're partners in this with you. We want to hear from parents if they have questions or concerns or ways that we can help. We want to hear from the courts if there's things that we can do, and we certainly want to hear from our professionals in child services about what we can do as a Board to try to help. And with that, I'd like to invite Judge McGee to make any comments, and then have Judy make any comments for us as I bring the resolution down.
Thank you Supervisor Bennett, Madam Chair, members of the Board, and thank you so much for the spotlight that you're putting on this month, and Court Adoption and Permanency Month. It's really all about outcomes, and these are the outcomes we hope to have in so many cases, and the courts, of course, are charged with the responsibility, but we couldn't do it without the partner agencies that we have. They're so vitally important to the work that's done in this area. We thank you very much for putting the spotlight on what goes on in this particular area, and how important it is to our future.
Hi, good morning. Just a quick reminder about what we do in the Human Services Agency, Department of Children and Family Services. We actually have a full-service adoption agency where we do home evaluations and case management services, and link families with adoption assistance programs. Last year, we had a goal of seventy-nine adoptions, and that's the '09-10 calendar year, or, excuse me, fiscal year, and we exceeded that by finalizing ninety-nine adoptions last year. So, we're really proud of that. So, I want to, I want to recognize a few of the staff who are here today from the Adoptions Unit who make this possible, and they have brought these families here with us today. So, we have Steve and Jessica Buckley, Jessica is here today with us, and then Rob and Corey Branchflower, so I want to offer them the opportunity to say a few words as well.
Thank you. Let's try to make this really quick, I have so much to say, I'm so excited to be here today. Thank you very much for inviting me here today, very excited. My name is Jessica Buckley, my husband Steve and I have been foster parents for just over seven years now. I clearly remember the day when my husband came to me and comforted me just after I suffered a medical setback in my life, and told me he heard this advertisement on the radio, that he said that the county was in dire need of foster parents. I never even heard of foster parents, I didn't, never had, went across adoptive families, just wasn't something that I was familiar with. So, we researched it a little, went to an informational meeting about this thing called foster care, and the first day, I mean, the first five minutes, I knew I was where I needed to be. We went through background checks, mandatory classes, fingerprinting, home inspections to become foster parents. Adoption never crossed our mind. We're, we're just thinking of helping some children out, giving them love and support, and setting them back home in a few months. We were wrong. We've had eleven foster care placements, four were reunited with their families, which we were very excited about, two were placed in a higher level of care, two siblings were adopted by another family, and we've taken legal guardianship of two, and we've adopted two. So, very shortly after I became licensed, I got a call from CPS saying that they had a four-day-old little girl in the NICU, and they thought she would be a perfect fit for our family. I picked Bella up, a very sick little girl with multiple health issues, but I knew that moment that she was my baby, my princess. Steve and I spent countless hours introducing her back to health, and the whole time in my home, I, I knew the possibility of her returning home. But I knew what I was there for, and was to support her in her struggle. Eighteen short months later, Bella was reunited with her family, and I was torn. My husband and I didn't know what to think, but we went along with it, we became very, very close with the biological family, we, I guess you can call it mentored the family, and stayed in constant contact with them. We thought it was the best of both worlds for, for little Bella. A year or so later, Bella was returned to the foster care system and back to my home. Our journey that began that sunny day in June of 2004... Sorry! It finally ended on October fifteenth, just past month, and Bella joined our Buckley family forever. I told myself I wasn't going to do that. We adopted Jordan Buckley. I'm not even going to go into that story.
That's a great story.
In closing, National Adoption Awareness Month is a time to celebrate family and to bring about awareness that there are hundreds and thousands of children in foster homes awaiting adoption. My family and I are part of the nationwide effort to call special attention to the children in foster care still awaiting adoption here in the United States. Today, we raise awareness of the need to find permanent placement, loving homes for these children in foster care currently waiting to find their forever family. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wow, now I have to follow that. My goodness.
Good morning.
Well, thank you so much for having us today, we're honored to be here, and we've had the privilege of working with some wonderful individuals with Human Services Agency, social workers, judges, and the passion is there with every person we've interacted with, and I sense it here with you all today as well. So, thank you for having us. Ours has been, I think, a similar journey to the one that you described. We, we, well, let me read what I have to say so I don't sound incoherent. "Just over four years ago, our lives changed dramatically. We'd been married for five years and had a very comfortable and happy life, having chosen not to have biological children. Our home was very quiet and very clean. Then came an eight-year-old boy with no front teeth, so tiny that I could scoop him up under one arm and deposit him on his bed during the many tantrums that occurred in those early months. Nine months later, a seven-year-old boy with eyes that light up a room arrived. The quiet and clean house disappeared and shows no sign of returning anytime soon. In a short period of time, our life and our family had changed dramatically, and we would soon discover it had changed forever. We learned much that first year of parenthood, we went through many highs and a few lows, a few heartaches, in the two years that would follow before we were able to completely, complete the adoptions of these two boys. At this point, we felt like our family could possibly be complete. We were wrong. Six months later, we received a phone call asking us if we would consider taking in a third boy. As we heard Anthony's story, we felt like maybe he would be a fit for our family. As soon as we laid eyes on him, we knew he should be ours. We completed some training necessary to care for his medical needs, and with a few, within a few weeks, he joined our family, just in time for Christmas. He would be our greatest Christmas gift. We permanently welcomed Anthony Miguel Martinez Branchflower to our family last August. We've lost track of the number of times we've been asked with keen interest why we've chosen to adopt three children from foster care. Our answer has been, why not? If not us, who? We had a home filled with love, and they needed one. The Bible says in Psalm sixty-eight, verse five, "A father to the fatherless, a defender of widows, is God in His holy dwelling. God sets the lonely in families." We believe that our lives ought to have a purpose beyond gathering wealth and possessions. What better purpose than to partner with God in His work? The richness we've discovered can't be measured or matched. The joy that we have can't be taken away. A couple of our boys have written a brief statement I'd like to read as well. Anthony wrote this. "When I was put in foster care, I knew what was going on because my aunt told me, and I was anxious. I was bounced around two times before I got a placement. I got a placement, and I was relieved and happy when I got adopted. There are kids that need help, but not enough people are willing to take them. They should try it and become foster parents. It would help, and the kids would be happy." And then Joseph wrote, "I moved to a foster home, and I didn't care. I lived at the foster home for a while. I was more mad when I had to leave. Now I'm glad I have a home to live in forever." Whenever we discuss the possibility of fostering, adopting, or adopting with potential parents, one of the statements we often hear is, "I've thought of fostering, but I'm afraid of..." fill in the blank. People are afraid of having to return the kids and getting their hearts broken. They're afraid of having their houses destroyed or their lives disrupted. In our experience, the kids are afraid too. They're afraid every night so much that they can barely sleep. We've made our best effort to keep every child that comes our way because we realize there is no inconvenience or heartbreak we will ever experience that is greater than the trauma they've experienced, and ultimately, their need to be loved and secure is more important than our comfort or our convenience. We'd like to salute those who have dedicated themselves to finding permanent homes for these children, and encourage anyone who can find a place in their home to also find a place in their heart to adopt a child. Thank you very much."
Thank you.
We do owe you a real debt of gratitude, I mean, how much we appreciate it, and I was just having this thought that, you know, we're constantly trying to find ways to recruit more foster homes, more people who are willing to adopt. I think we're just going to take the video that we have of you two speaking, and that's as good as anything that we have. I, I'm serious. Both of those were just so effective and so appropriate for us, so thank you very much. My questions for you are, I, I know what you mean about the house suddenly being destroyed, how about the yard? Is there any grass left? Not much, right? Okay, great. Well, we, we are going, is there anybody else who has anything that you want to say, any of the other representatives from the courts, right? We're going to take a picture, and we'd like to, Judy, we'd like you to have your staff come down for this picture also. But before we take that picture, there's another picture I'd like to take. My guess is, since this is homeschool, you want to make this an educational trip to the government center, and so just to get an idea of what it's like to be up there and look down, why don't we have these three gentlemen go on up and get on, in between Ms. Robinson and Mr. Zaragosa, and then between Supervisor Long and Parks and over there by Supervisor Foy, so we can get a picture of you guys up there, right? And then I'm going to go up there and get my picture taken with them, and then I'll...
Chair, can I share a little virtual recording? I think it's still great to hear the good side of the CPS, the court system, and the parents, you know, and I want to thank you for an excellent job.
Excuse me, let me, let me start over again, I just want to hear, you know, I just want to thank you for the good side of the, of the CPS, the court system, and the parents, and the good things that you're doing for, for the children, and thank you for the presentation, very emotional, and I want to thank you for that.
And we'll show you what we got, and these are iPads. See, there's the agenda, there's the resolution, have we just, we all see it's on that iPad right there, and this is this, and this is how we vote, so you make a motion, so I would make a motion. And I'm reversed on here. What's your resolution say? How about thanking your parents, huh?
Thank you, Mom and Dad.
All right, it's got a picture there, Anna?
Thank you, Mom and Dad. Thank you. Thank you.
And you, you got your microphone on?
I did.
All righty, great. Okay, all right, here we go, there Anna's taking the picture right there. Gentlemen, you're in charge. All right, well, we'll come right over here, guys, and we'll have a picture for you.
Good job, buddy. You guys were camping.
Good job.
She does have beautiful eyes.
We'll come right around over here, folks. Come on over here, guys, Judy, right in front, we're going to let you three guys, right there, all right? There we go, there we go, Mom and Dad right here, we got to move back a little bit more wide. Judy, your staff, come on over there, there we go.
I'll take a picture.
So, there's one more of them.
Yeah, I have a couple more.
Thank you all so much, to the families, to the court, Judge McGee, thank you.
That's yours?
Sure, it's actually yours.
I actually think it's yours.
It's one of the best things we do, and thank you so much for...
It is, we do a lot of stuff, but this has got to be the best.
I actually want to make sure the press hears this, so Kathleen Wilson, I, I misspoke, I said five-hundred thousand cases reported in Ventura County, I meant to say in the state of California, right?
Even she caught that speech.
All right, great, thanks.
Thank you Supervisor, that was, that was a wonderful, good, good warm field.
Thank you.
Okay, our next item, time certain, we're, again, we're going to push the seventeen, item seventeen, so it coincides with the item twenty-one, so we're going to go to item eighteen now, which is also a time certain, item eighteen. And it's Public Works item, and good morning.
Good morning, Chair Long, members of the Board, Ms. Robinson. Why the issue of amending ordinance seems so mundane after that? But that's why I'm here this morning. For the record, I am Bruce Beluski, the manager of the Integrated Waste Management Division within the Public Works Water and Sanitation Department. The item now before you is the first public hearing of a recommended amendment, amendment to County Ordinance forty-three fifty-seven, which is the county's construction and demolition debris diversion requirement approved by your Board in January of 2007. As you know, state law requires every jurisdiction to divert as much solid waste material from local landfills as possible. In these ongoing efforts, Ordinance forty-three fifty-seven has been extremely successful. In fact, in the four years since it was approved by your Board, the ordinance is responsible for permitting over one-thousand-five-hundred county permitted projects while ensuring the diversion of more than one-hundred-and-eighty-thousand tons of material from our local landfills. Recently, the California Building Standards Commission established new green building standards code, which among other things, requires the diversion of recyclable or reusable materials from every newly constructed building or facility within the state of California. Since this single requirement is more stringent... The ordinance 4357 was created and adopted in response to the county's efforts to comply with AB 939. Yes.
And what is the county currently, what's her rate now for diversion?
Well, the diversion rate factor, that was really abandoned by the state a couple of years ago and they chose to go with a per capita disposal requirement. When they made that requirement, they established a new baseline. For Ventura County, that came out to 7.7 pounds per person. We are now at 6.2, which is approximately 20% below where we need to be. So, we're doing extremely well. That having been said, I thought you may ask that question. And for old times' sake, our diversion comparison, we're at about 60%. So, by all standards, we're very well surpassing the state requirement.
So, we're meeting the mandate?
Absolutely.
Okay, good, good job. So, now we're going from the, what was it, 1,000 square foot to every single...
That's correct. That's correct.
So, we have to recycle the whole, you know...
Well, both our current ordinance now, as well as the state requirement, does allow exemptions to occur. And to give you an example, say someone wants to build a prefabricated metal structure, which not going to be producing any waste at all, we would exempt that. Simply no reason to have a requirement when it doesn't apply.
And this is a mandated...
That's correct, yes.
Thank you, Bruce.
So, how does... Somebody's building a shed in their backyard and it's 500 square feet and you've got some waste that comes out of it. So, what's the situation for them? They go up to the landfill and then they have to divide that piece out? I mean, I just want to... So, people have no idea about this, right?
That's correct. But I could say that the county's current ordinance with 1,000 square feet or more is actually much more appropriate, simply because for the reason you point out, if someone builds a 500-square-foot structure, there's going to be very minimal waste, if any. Because of the economies of scale and the methods that would be required to divert and recyclable, recycle the very minute material that would be expected from such a project, we would exempt that.
You would?
And for projects, to be honest, where we have less than 1,000 square feet, you're looking at one to two projects per year, counting wine, for unincorporated area.
Good, so the average person is doing something, they're not going to know about it, it's not going to...
No difference, that's correct.
Okay, great, thanks.
Good question.
Any other questions on this? This is a first read. It will be back to us on November 23rd. So, this is a reading title only and the action of the board?
Of approval?
It's a mandate.
Motion in a second? Please vote. And that passes, reading title only?
Thank you.
Title of the ordinance, "An Ordinance Amending Ventura County Ordinance Code, Division 4, Chapter 7, Article 3, Section 4781, Regarding Recycling and Diversion of Construction and Demolition Debris."
Thank you. And that will be back for final adoption on November 23rd. Now, we'll move to item 19, Supervisor Bennett.
There we go. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I'm pleased that we're right at 10:30 and we're able to do this with our veterans in the room right on time. And first of all, this is an item to honor the fact that it's 25-year anniversary of the construction of the Veterans Memorial out here at the corner of Telefona and Victoria. And quite frankly, I think all of us would have missed this. I had not a gentleman back in the back, and I'm going to ask him to stand up, Gary Couch. And he called my office, said he was looking at the memorial and he noticed that it was 25 years ago that this thing was dedicated. And as a result of that, we were reminded that it was time to do this. So, I want to thank him very much for doing that. And so, today, I'm really pleased to have a number of veterans in the room. And the first veteran I want to introduce is a veteran who's also in charge of the maintenance of this structure. And there was some question in terms of maintenance. And I really appreciate that Paul Grossgold, the head of our GSA and also a veteran who we were fortunate enough to get to come and work here, has taken on, the GSA has taken on the responsibility of the maintenance of that structure. And so, Paul, if you would come on forward, we're going to be presenting the resolution to him. Somebody who takes full advantage of this veterans' structure is sitting right in front of him, Max Vanderwick. And Max, would you just stand up, please, Max? People, if you can't hear me, there you go, Max. And Max... Max annually holds our Pearl Harbor Day Celebration at the Veterans Memorial on December 7th, and we really appreciate that special day to particularly remember that event. And then, we have the good fortune in the room to have a number of other veterans. And if you'd just stand up for a moment as I call your name so we can properly recognize you. And that's Eugene Ogden. These are all from the TO VFW Hall, correct? Then, is it Henry Papika? Great, got close. Maynard Gentry Senior, May Porter, Jack Carter, and Burl Spurlock. And we thank you all for taking the time to come here. a resolution to Supervisor Long, and we appreciate you coming back for this item, David Ha Hay, is it Hay or Ha? Yeah, Hay. Richard Camacho, Dave Betty, and I'm sorry, you came in right after we clicked the names?
Bobby Holmes.
Bobby Holmes, thank you very much for being with me. The whole purpose of the memorial is to make sure that we remember the great sacrifices that these men and women have put forward so that we can be sitting here debating the finer points of democracy and many other good things, so that those kids that were just in this room a little while ago get to grow up in a country that has this very unique set of rights and liberties and responsibilities that they have. So, gentlemen and ladies, thank you very much for your service to this country. And now, just very quickly, it's a very short resolution, and we are trying to bring in the picture. It hangs out in our hallway, but they're having some trouble getting it off of the wall. So, it... But this is a resolution honoring the 25-year anniversary of Ventura County's Veterans Memorial Dedication. And it was dedicated November 11th, 1985. And by the way, we're doing this two days early because we did not want to compete with all the other Veterans Day celebrations that are November 11th. After a concerted countywide effort of donated labor and materials, design, engineering expertise from the construction trades and their unions, along with individuals, service clubs, community and business organizations. And if you want to see all those people, everybody's name and all the organizations are listed underneath that picture. And Ms. Robinson tells me that she got her picture in the newspaper because one of the first things that she was assigned here in Ventura County was to work on this particular thing, right? So, if you have any stories you want to tell us about this afterwards, we look forward to that. The county of Ventura provided the land on the campus. The memorial pays tribute to all five branches of the armed services, the Army, Navy, Marine, Air Force, and the Coast Guard, and in memory of the veterans and the sacrifices they made by the men and women who answered their county's call. Some have survived, some have died, some are still missing, but none are ever the same. So, the Board of Supervisors presents this resolution on the 25th anniversary of the dedication of the Ventura County's Veterans Memorial, honoring the memory of those who have served the call of their country and the incredible community-wide effort that went into building this fitting memorial that is right there in a very high-visibility spot. And so, Mr. Grossgold, do you have anything you'd like to say as I come down to present you with this resolution?
Only that it's an honor to be able to keep that memorial looking as good as we can make it. We actually did give it a little facelift over the past year or so, some paintings, some sand blasting, some filling, but it is getting, it's showing its age a little bit. And we want to do more and we're going to be looking at that memorial because it does represent, like the supervisor said, the honor we pay to veterans, past, present, and future. And I just wanted to also mention, I saw Phil Nelson in the back is a veteran. I think that guy there, Jeff Pratt, might also be a veteran. And also, Mr. Bill Barado, who's hiding in the back, is also a co-member with me on the board of the Ventura County, or the Gold Coast Veterans Foundation, so he came for this as well. We probably missed a few out here, but anyway, it's just our pleasure and honor to do that.
Could we have all the veterans come down for a quick picture? And I'll take our picture, and that's even our staff veterans. But if you're a veteran, if you'll come on down, we'd love to have you in this picture here quickly. And then, maybe the picture will make it that's on the wall before we get done with this.
Yeah, yeah, sure was. Thank you all for coming in. Thank you for your service. There's the picture. Take out it. Hold it off the wall.
Better link it down, really, John.
There's the picture.
Anyway, you could just mention this.
Brian mentioned they took down the wrong one. That's he had to go liberate this one from the wall.
I have to repair the wall now?
You probably do.
More repair work, Paul.
Thank you very much, all of you for coming in. That was nice, thank you.
It was nice, yeah.
All right, Supervisor, you have the next item. We'll handle that and then we'll go to our two items that are together. So, you have the next item.
Thank you very much. This is, this certainly fits with the previous item that we had where we were celebrating permanency. But a remarkable group of women, four of them came together and they have, and I think this really does help us kick off, this year is going to be the year of emancipated youth in Ventura County. I'm convinced. So, we have, there are a number of things that are coming together for emancipated youth. But I think there are so many people in Ventura County who are determined to say that when a child turns 18 and they no longer have the support of the state, we're not going to just let them go out on their own. And I think that they use the same language that we've used in here, which is we all are the extended family of those 50 or so children every year who emancipate from our foster care system and don't necessarily have that extended family, those aunts and uncles and grandparents and even parents that they can fall back on to get them through all the crisis that we went through between ages 18 and 30 or so. Some of us kept right on going through those adolescent crises, but you absolutely need that support group. And these four women have stepped forward. And this is a real joyous presentation to be able to make. And so, I'd like to have Linda Sorrell, Linda Jordan, Linda Livingston, and Brenda Brennan please come forward. And in our audience, the people that helped get this off the ground, Pam Waldron and Sonia Croft, would you come forward also? Are they here? There we go, great. And here's what they basically did. These women were working on a different project in a nonprofit organization assisting victims of domestic violence in Ventura County. And while they were working on that, they came together with this idea of creating a calendar as a fundraising event. And they have decided to donate the proceeds of this calendar to the children's auxiliary services to be specifically dedicated for the use of services for emancipating foster youth. And the reason it's such a kickoff, and I hope you will come, but this April, we will have specific efforts to really make some special outreach to these emancipating youth to make sure that they have a good game plan, to make sure they're hooked up with adults, et cetera. And there's also a group that has come together that's meeting at Casa Pacifica. Cindy Cantle on my staff, who does a great job in this area, was able to attend that first meeting and will be attending those meetings regularly also. But this truly is the year that emancipated foster youth, I think we're going to get tremendous focus this year. But there is this wonderful calendar that was put together here. And so, seeing the calendar, professional photography, right? By which Linda? There we go, right? And that's Linda, give me your last name?
Jordan.
Jordan, all right, by Linda Jordan. So, these are professional photographs by Linda Jordan here. And I'd like you to, I'd like to just quickly read this resolution to you. Where Linda Sorrell, Linda Jordan, Brenda Brennan, and Linda Livingston are the Trellis Group, four women who met 10 years ago, working in a nonprofit organization assisting victims of domestic violence. They came together with the idea to create a calendar to raise funds to help the needy in our community. Approximately 40 to 50 youth transition from foster care system as young adults each year. These youths face many challenges in meeting their basic housing, food, clothing, education, medical, and employment needs. And we know many of these children, a year or two after they leave, are homeless and on the streets, and it's simply unacceptable for us for that to be the case. The Trellis Group recognized that while most young adults who are out on their own for the first time have family to help them emotionally and financially, transitioning foster youth are met with a myriad of challenges they face alone, and that the proceeds from the "All Things Grow With Love" calendar sales would go towards helping these youth. The Children's Services Auxiliary has collaborated with the Trellis Group and is acting as their nonprofit fiscal agent, along with the Ventura County Children, Family Services, Community Coordinator. They are able to identify the most pressing needs of these transitioning youth, and the net proceeds from the calendar will be used by the auxiliary to help meet those needs. Foster youth are our community's children, and the Trellis Group exemplifies the generous, creative, and effective assistance that our community can provide to ensure that every child in Ventura County has strong support as they transition to adulthood. So, we certainly thank you very much as the Board of Supervisors takes great pleasure in honoring and commending the Trellis Group for taking positive action for our transitional youth. And these calendars, I'm really happy to have a check here to buy seven calendars from you today to kick this off. One for each board member, one for Marty Robinson, and one for Roberta. So, if you could deliver, I'll deliver the check if you'll deliver the calendars.
Absolutely.
And then, we'll let you, and while I come down, we'll let you make any comments if you'd like to make.
All right. My name is Linda Sorrell, and I am truly honored by this acknowledgement. First of all, for bringing the attention to a group of four women, or three women, that I've had the privilege of bringing on board as my core team without hesitation. And subsequently, Pam and Sonia and Cindy had no hesitation. We kind of came to them with this idea and how do we go about doing it? So, thank you to each one of you for making this dream for me and Linda, Linda and Brenda come true. And Linda Livingston just has a few words on how we arrived at choosing this particular sector of the community for our proceeds recipient.
Hi. I'm Linda Livingston. That's Linda number two, if you're keeping track alphabetically. When we met, we knew we wanted to donate the funds to some group. And with the economy being the way it is, of course, that field's wide open. And homelessness kept coming up again and again. And then, a couple of us remembered reading an article about how foster youth... And then a couple of us remembered reading an article about how foster youth go from home to home with their meager belongings in a garbage bag, which was heartbreaking. So we encouraged, or perhaps bullied, the others into looking at foster youth. And then there was kind of a nice melding of the foster youth and homeless, the homeless problem, what happens when they're 18 and they're kicked out of the nest. So we all came back together, and that's the reason we chose them, as Supervisor Bennett mentioned. They don't have the assistance that other kids do when they go out into the world. So I also want to mention that we came armed with a lot of calendars, if anybody else would like some today. Thank you.
Okay, great. Great.
I do want to point out, it is the perfect time of year to be buying your calendars for next year. It's not a coincidence that we timed it for right now, but it is, if you're going to be buying calendars, this is a great way to contribute to our youth at the same time. So thank you very much. I'd like to present the resolution to you over here. If you want to pass those out to the, actually, just give them to Roberta and she'll pass them out. I already have mine, so just give her six. We want to make sure we have the right.
And what's the price on the calendars?
What's that?
Price?
Sixteen dollars.
Sixteen dollars, right.
Including tax and shipping.
A bargain, a bargain at twice the price.
That is a bargain.
Is there a website that you can order from? Is there a website you can order from?
No, but you can go on, on the back, it talks, right? Here's our email address. We have it on that bar.
That's great.
We released it November 13th of last year. But we're on Facebook.
Okay, and for the audience, it's the dot trellis dot group at gmail dot com.
Or you can leave a message for me at 805-672-0334.
We have lots of employees listening, so let's do that again. 805.
805-672.
672.
0334.
0334, if you want to order one of these calendars.
I'm ordering today, so it's just a message machine that I check it every night, hopefully, so we can have that message to you there.
Nobody under 30 will leave a message, though, right? If they can't do it by text, they won't.
If you need another Linda for your group, we got two more Lindas up here, Linda Ash and myself.
Look at that one. It's beautiful photography in here. These are marvelous. Appreciate your support. And thank you, Supervisor.
You're welcome.
Appreciate the calendar, and.
Good morning.
We'll order more.
Merry Christmas.
Yeah, that's right. Okay, and thank you all for your patience here in the audience. We have completed those items now, and we're going to go back to item 17, and it is certainly also connected with item 21. Obviously, we act separately on each of them, but we'll hear item 17 first, and good morning. It's a public hearing regarding approval and adoption of an ordinance item. We might, let's see how we get through this. Okay, go ahead.
Good morning, Chair Long, Supervisor. My name is Christina Rizzi, of Planning Staff, and I'm here to present a request to amend the non-cosus zoning ordinance and zoning maps to allow a zone change that's privately initiated on behalf of the James Lloyd Butler Family LLC, and this zone change is known as Zone Change Number ZN08-009. The location of the project site is at 2317 West LA Avenue in the unincorporated area of Saticoy. State Route 118 abuts the project site to the south, and Lloyd Butler Ranch Road abuts the parcel, proposed parcel number one to the east. The project before you is a zone change to rezone the northwest portion of Proposed Parcel Four to accommodate LCA contract approval requirements, and to, and as the site is currently zoned OS 160, OS 80, and AE 40, the current designation of those parcels will not meet the minimum lot size requirements for the zoning. So the zone change is to rezone that portion of Proposed Parcel Four to all AE 40 zoning. And this is where the zone change will occur. Here's the area. The zone change is also a companion request to Parcel Map 5817, when that parcel map was approved by the Planning Director on June 23rd of this year. And so the zone change and the parcel map were analyzed in one environmental document, and that was a negative declaration. Notice of the environmental document and notice of this hearing today where sinasse property owners within 300 feet of the project site and a legal ad published in the Ventura County Star. Regarding the zone change before you today, there were no public or jurisdictional comments. The non-cosus zoning ordinance requires that certain findings are meant to allow a zone change, and during our analysis of the project, staff made those findings, that the zone change would not have an adverse effect on the public health, safety, and general welfare, and reflects good zoning practices and is consistent with the county general plan. So the Planning Commission heard the zone change request at its August 26th hearing of this year, and recommends that your board approve the zone change through the adoption of the attached ordinance amendment, as well as the other recommended actions that are provided on page one of your board approval, your board letter today. So that concludes my presentation on this project. Do you have any questions?
Are there any questions at this time? This is a public hearing. Are there any cards submitted, a request to speak? No request to speak? Okay, I will open and close the public hearing then with no request to speak, and no questions from the board.
Madam Chair? Yes. Staff, I think, has worked well with the applicant, and quite a few conversations have taken place. I think this is the reason that we're here with no comments or anything, is because there's been good work done on this. I'd like to move the recommended action.
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second to adopt the recommended action. And that passes unanimously. So as I mentioned, and thank you, we'll move then to item 21, which is the item connected to this. Again, a public hearing and approval of the tentative tract map.
Good morning again. This is a request to approve tentative tract map 5816, and to also amend the non-cosus zoning ordinance and zoning maps to allow a zone change that is initiated by the Shawn Lloyd Butler Family LLC, and that zone change is known as ZN08-0010. The project site is also located at 2317 West LA Avenue in the unincorporated area of Saticoy. State Route 118 abuts the project site to the south, and Clubhouse Drive abuts the proposed parcels four, five, and one to the north. And this project is located directly adjacent to the previous project we just discussed. The tentative tract map is a request to subdivide 125.6 acres into five separate lots. Three of the lots are above 40 acres. One of the lots is three acres approximately, and the last lot is a little more than one acre in size. This is just a aerial of the proposed lots. SR 118, Clubhouse Drive. The second component to this project is a zone change to rezone Proposed Parcel Four from RE 10 and RE 1 to RE 2, so that when the zone change is approved by the board, it will be all completely RE 2 zoning. And this is just a diagram of the existing and general plan land use designations, which are rural and existing community. And this is a map of the proposed zone change. The tentative tract map and the zone change were analyzed in one environmental document, and that was determined to be a negative declaration. As the previous project, a notice was sent of the, notice of this hearing and a notice of the intent to adopt the negative declaration were sent to property owners within 300 feet of the project site, and published a legal ad in Ventura County Star. For the tentative tract map, there was comments received and responded to by the Caltrans District 7, and those comments are expressed in detail on Exhibit 6 of the Planning Commission's staff report. One aspect of this project that came out during the environmental document stage was an agricultural restrictive covenant, and that would be proposed to go on parcels one through three, and it would be to preserve prime agricultural farmland. And as with the zone change, certain findings must be made to make the zone change consistent with the non-cosus zoning ordinance, and planning staff did do their analysis and confirm that the zone change will be consistent. And with the subdivision map act and the county subdivision ordinance, the project is consistent with these findings, and those findings are discussed in detail in Section 2 of the Planning Commission's staff report. So this tract map and zone change were heard by the Planning Commission at its August 26th hearing, and they recommended as well that the tentative tract map be approved by your board, and the ordinance adopting, abending the non-cosus zoning ordinance be approved by your board as well, as well as the other recommended actions as noted in the recommended actions of your board letter, page one. So if you have any questions, that concludes my presentation.
Okay, questions?
Could you address the agricultural buffer?
The agricultural restrictive covenant or the buffer?
I know that there's a restrictive covenant, but I'm just referring to a buffer between what could be residences and.
Um, there was no buffer identified. I was just informed by the applicant that it's 50 feet.
Pardon?
Fifty feet.
And will that be from the units, from the residential units?
I could have the applicant representative come up and address that, if you'd like.
I would like to know. Generally, that's something that is placed on when they come in for their permit, their building permits, that you have a requirement of a buffer from the agriculture land, and that is generally 150 feet, as I recall, up to 300 feet, but if there's intervening topography or vegetation, it goes to 150 feet.
If I could have.
We invite the applicant up.
Okay.
Tell staff is taking a look at that. The applicant, someone from the applicant, can speak to it? Sure, come on in.
Hi, I'm Lynn Jensen with Jensen Design and Survey, and we've worked quite a long time on this project. The Agricultural Commissioner's Office recommended on lots four and five that we have a 50-foot buffer to the property to, I guess it's the west, or the east, I'm sorry, for the smaller two, of the two lots, in order to buffer them from the farmland on that side. So we agreed to that, and that's part of the, actually, part, I believe, of the agricultural restrictive covenant document.
That's correct, and it is also in the initial study assessment guidelines that the Ad Commissioner's Office is on page 66 of the Planning Commission's staff report under Item E Land Use Incompatibility. So they did offer that 50 feet, and that was acceptable to the Ad Commissioner's Office.
Thank you.
I'm just wondering, because it sounds like it's a waiving of our policy, isn't it?
A setback policy?
Yes, the agricultural buffer is, it sounds like it's being waived to allow it to be reduced to only 50 feet.
Right, so the agricultural buffer isn't an ordinance, so it is policy, and that policy is given to the planning department by the agricultural department. So they make the recommendations on a case-by-case basis, since it isn't ordinance, and then they provide that to us, and that is what we carry forward. That's the way that it's been handled, since that ordinance did not pass.
Can I make one other comment, too? The lots that we're talking about are not even 150 feet wide, so in order to put that buffer, that large of a buffer, you would not, you know, have a lot. And we did talk quite a bit with the adjacent property owner, and they agreed with the 50-foot buffer, so that was an agreement there. And I also would like to bring up the point that at the Cabrillo Racquet Club property across the street, the buffer, they allowed, you guys voted to allow eight lots there, and the buffer was decreased to 80 feet, and they are one-acre lots also. So I think the Agricultural Commissioner's Office was trying to make this all work, as they did with the Cabrillo Racquet Club property, which was approved, I think, in 2006 or so, allowing eight houses, and those houses are actually going to be kind of in the middle of Mr. Lloyd Butler's farmland, and that's one of the reasons why they proceeded to create the two lots across the street, so that there isn't farming surrounding the Cabrillo residential subdivision also.
Yeah, it's just, it is a board policy, isn't it, the buffer? Or is it an agriculture commission's policy?
It's a policy by the Ad Commissioner's Office. Yeah, so we do defer to them, but Ms. Jensen is correct, they are very narrow lots, and the APAC took that into consideration when they, when they gave us the 50-foot.
I can understand the logic behind it. If your lot isn't big enough to have a large buffer, you have a smaller buffer, and it's just that the basis for it is based on trying to prevent things like pesticide drift, noise, odors, all those kind of things, and having them within 50 feet, you know, what's to say the next one comes in at 20 feet, you know, because that's what they can offer? So I think I was, if I recall correctly on that Racquet Club one, I had some concerns that we had reduced it from 150 to 80. Now we're going from 80 to 50. That gives me even greater concern, because I don't, I don't know if we're really fulfilling the intent and purpose of putting a buffer in to begin with, if the purpose is to do those things of, you know, reducing impacts to new residents, kids playing in the backyard, living next to ag land, and don't want to see the agricultural land being, you know, the farmer being imposed on when we do develop so close to farmland.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make these comments. One, land use development in Ventura County is obviously a very, very important issue to lots of people, both the landowners and to the residents, and we have all kinds of things that have heightened this. This project has, is not a new, suddenly on the horizon project. This project's been having conversations for a long period of time. I think that there are a number of things in here that the applicant would like to not have in here. I think that there are a number of things in here that if you could do it the other way, you know, other people would really like to have in there. I think that, I've spent a lot of time on this one, I think appropriate compromises have been made. I think this is really an example of government working, and the property owner working with the government to try to make it work, and our staff trying to carry out their mandates, and there may be things that we need to, need to look at in advance, but at this point in time with this project, I think that there, we lose more than we gain in terms of the precedents and the policies, and sort of the ability for somebody to feel like, by working all this time through the process, this is, these are the trade-offs they're willing to make, and this is what they're willing to get. So I appreciate the comments of Supervisor Parks, and I've been very concerned about ag buffers also. I think in this situation, the appropriate compromises have been made. I think in this situation, the appropriate compromises have been made, so I'm going to be making the motion when we're, I don't want to cut off debate early, but if anybody has, if nobody has anything else, I'll be making the motion, but let the full debate go forward.
The basis for reducing buffers are generally some mitigating circumstances. I'm wondering if, for example, has there been put, is there a vegetation, vegetative screening that has occurred? That's one of the reasons why you reduce it from 150 or from 300 to 150. Do you know if that has occurred? Is that part of the proposal?
It is not part of the proposal at this point. We did talk about it with the Agricultural Commissioner's Office, and they did not feel that it was necessary, partly because of the land use and the farming is orchards behind them, and it isn't a really intensive row crop environment at this point. And also, we did, it was discussed with the adjacent property owner, and a lot of times the Agricultural Commissioner's Office likes to allow the property owners to determine that between themselves. And if the property owners, actually in the Cabrillo Racket Club situation, the property owner came and said they really didn't agree with the buffer size, and it was passed in any case. And in this case, we do have agreement with the adjacent property owner, and they felt that that was adequate, so.
And is it a, is it real onerous to say, put up, you know, some bushes between the two properties to help catch some of the pesticide drift? I think that's, is that the basis for the screening, Ms. Rodriguez?
That is the basis for it, but APAC heard this item, and it was presented to them on October 8th in 2008, and they did vote 3-0 to recommend applying without conditions for land use compatibility for that. That was their decision at that time, based on the fact that we didn't have an ordinance to enforce.
You know, I would think, you know, at a minimum, you can do the vegetative screening. I mean, that's pretty cheap, and it is supposedly a way to help reduce the impacts, I guess, from pesticide drift. Is that, do you know if that's the basis for the vegetation?
That is the basis for that.
So I would say that at a minimum, you know, if you're going to reduce it to, what was it, 50 feet now, that, you know, putting a vegetative, you know, line along the property line, a vegetation, bushes to help keep pesticide drift from going to people's properties, that is not a huge requirement. That's something that I would suggest.
If I just, looking at your aerial view, it looks like there's a 50, I mean, you've got your spot and then your lot, and it looks like there's a road around the other land behind it, so probably there's another 20 to 50 feet of additional. When I look on here, it looks like it's part of the other piece, so it could be a much larger piece. But I agree, a lot of work has been done, and I appreciate you trying to get agreement with the other property owners up front so we don't have problems later, so I appreciate you willing to do that. So I can be very supportive of what you've gone and done here, so thank you very much.
Well, I would just say that I think the policy is certainly to give discretion and review by both the board and the Ad Commissioner and APAC and the applicants, so that they can find what works best for the variety of sizes that you have of the lots that your parcels we're dealing with here. So all sides, one size doesn't fit all, that's what I was trying to put together there, so. So I think there's been a lot of work on this, so. There's, let me ask, any other comments from the applicant? Anything else you wish to add at this time, any other questions of staff?
I would like to make one other comment. I think the Lloyd Butler family, they've owned their property in their family for 150 years, and this subdivision process is part of succession planning for them, to ensure the property for their children, and that is really the reason for it. They have no indication as long as farming is economic here, they have, they will be probably building nothing. Actually, their first succession plan was done in 1990, when they created the lots for the three brothers of the Lloyd Butler family, and that was 20 years ago, and there hasn't been a single structure built on the property since then. And I think that you will see them continue to farm, including the two pieces we're talking about, the lots four and five. I believe they will continue to farm those, and if there's any reason why they wouldn't farm them, it was probably because the subdivision gets built across the street, and it makes it these very small, narrow parcels, it may be difficult at that point for them to continue farming with the pressure from the development across the street. But even so, they may continue farming it after that. I think they are committed to farming in this community, and I thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to move the recommended actions.
There's a motion and a second to move the recommended action. I didn't have any other speaker cards submitted, just for the record, okay?
And I would like to make an amendment that when houses are built there, that there be vegetative screening along the property line.
There's, that was a request for an amendment to the motion, and a second or acceptance of that request, I don't hear one, so move ahead with the recommended action. And I would just say, the Ad Commissioner has a responsibility for enforcing regulations as to buffers and uses, and I, and I say that they, he still, that, the Ad Commissioner's Office has that authority, and I expect he will uphold his responsibility. Please vote. That passes 5-0. Thank you. And thank you, staff, appreciate the work. All right, now we're going to move to our next time certain item, and sorry for the bit of delay, thank you for your patience. It is Item 22, and it is Supervisor Parks.
Thank you, and this is a great joy for me to be able to have the Eric Hubert Veterans of Foreign War Post representatives here today, Post 11395. And what I'd like to do is come down to the microphone. If you'd like to come up, I'll read this resolution and present it to you.
Hi, nice to see you. So glad you could make it. Thank you so much for coming in. Thank you so much. This honors the Eric Hubert Veterans of Foreign War Post 11395, and it says, "Whereas the Veterans of Foreign Wars, VFW, is a national organization that gives a voice to veterans of overseas conflicts, honors their military service, promotes patriotism through volunteer effort in local communities, and supports veterans' families across the United States. And whereas Eric Hubert VFW Post 11395 was established in 1992 and has been actively engaged in advocating for homeless veterans for the past 18 years through Ventura County Stand Down for Homeless Veterans and the Adopt a Vet Program, and provides financial support to projects that help deploy troops and their families in Ventura County. And whereas VFW Post 11395 honors Captain Eric Hubert, a Thousand Oaks native son, who bravely served this country as an Air Force officer pilot in 1970 in Cambodia, and whose name is honored on Line 33 of the Vietnam Wall in Washington, DC. And whereas VFW Post 11395 conducts an annual wreath laying and flag retirement ceremony at the Eric Hubert Memorial at the Thousand Oaks Civic Arts Plaza to honor their fallen brethren. And whereas on November 11th, 2010, we celebrate Veterans Day to commemorate the brave and patriotism of all the men and women who have served our nation in the United States military. And in this season of thankfulness, it is fitting to take this opportunity to recognize the members of the FFW Post 11395. Now therefore be it resolved that the Ventura County Board of Supervisors takes great pleasure in honoring the Eric Hubert Veterans of Foreign War Post 11395 for their valuable service it provides to the veterans of our community, and thanks the members of the post for their courageous service to protect our great nation." So thank you for coming, thank you for your service, thanks for what you continue to do. It's so much appreciated. You guys are wonderful in keeping up that newsletter. If you'd like to make any comments or...
I'm Gene Argon, I'm the post adjutant. I just wanted to make mention that the funds that we use to help the needy veterans and the homeless veterans is not just used in Thousand Oaks, but we, we reach out to everybody in Ventura County. They don't have to be a veteran of a conflict, all they have to be is a veteran of the United States military. Twice, how we get our funds is twice a year, we have poppy drives, one around Ventura, around Veterans Memorial, I beg your pardon, around Veterans Day, and the other one around Memorial Day. With those donations we receive on distribution of poppies, we use that money 100% because it's all volunteers, to help needy veterans. We help in the Sepulveda Medical VA Center, they have a nursing home care unit there and a hospice wing, and we donate time and supplies to help the people that are in there have a little bit nicer environment. We do everything we can, we get a lot of phone calls, as I say, we reach out not only to Thousand Oaks, but to all of Ventura County, or whoever, anybody calls. Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you so much, thank you.
And thank you.
My buddy here. How about giving a picture here? Yeah, you can.
Take a few photos, person, one, two, three. One, two, three.
I can get a copy of that, too.
If you need another picture, just go to post office.
Thank you for spending the morning with us. All right, board members, next up is Item 23, and it's recognizing GIS Day. Supervisor Foy.
Thank you. Yes, this is, well, next week is, because we're not going to be here next week, is Geographic Awareness Week. Is Laura out there? There she is, there, okay. Have her come down. As again, we do this every year, and this is an important part of what goes on, it's estimated that 90% of government, county government information is geographic, so you got your whole staff, that's great, I appreciate it. Why don't you go ahead, and I don't want to take all your comments from you, but make a few about, tell us a little bit.
Well, Supervisor Foy, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Mrs. Robinson, I first want to thank you for recognizing the importance of spatial data and GIS technologies, and the staff, of course, that use them and support them, as to their importance to the day-to-day and the strategic operations of our county government. Tomorrow is GIS Day at the county, as you said, next week is World GIS Day. This will be our 10th Annual GIS Day at the county, and it's our opportunity to share what is going on in the various agencies and departments, and how they're utilizing the technologies, and to help educate one another. So we will have our presentations here in the Board of Supervisors Hearing Room tomorrow from 9:15 until 3:00. From 3:00 to 3:30, we have a meet and greet at the map gallery, and I'm so pleased to say that the Director of the Ojai Boys and Girls Club will be here to stand with the three-dimensional map that that club did of Ventura County, so we'll have some opportunities for pictures.
And I saw it hanging up downstairs, it's very nicely done, thank you.
We're going to bring it up for the map gallery. Our keynote speaker will be Jamie Labor. He is a senior hydrologist from NOAA and the National Weather Service, so I hope that you can join us tomorrow. And for those who can't join us here in the Board of Supervisors room, as usual, we will have the presentations live through Granicus and available on the intranet tomorrow, and it will be available on the internet from Thursday on, so that our citizens can also see these marvelous creations. I'd like to introduce a few of the staff, the GIS professionals that support what occurs every day. From the Resource Management Agency, we have Jose Moreno and Gloria Heneppe. From IT Services, David Hutchison, Richard Pascal, Leanne Phillips, and Eric Alger. And there are so many GIS users here at the county that are busy at their desks today that couldn't be here to share in recognizing GIS Day. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming in.
Thank you so much for all your help. I know you provide maps for our office and really appreciate it, and now it's getting simple enough that we can almost figure out and do it ourselves, so that's, that's the way it should be, but thank you for all the help.
Certainly has changed our world, the whole GIS-ing. GIS-ing, is that a Scrabble word?
Okay. Sure you have to count them all. Take picture, count three, one, two, three. One more, please. One, two, three.
And thank you for coming in. Hope you have a successful day tomorrow.
I thought I was going to get to do all the presentations today there, but I guess we let you guys squeeze in.
You were ruling it, then. Okay, board members, we're moving forward to Item 24, which is the second hearing, adoption of a MOA with our IUOE.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. We are bringing before you the second reading of the Memorandum of Agreement with the International Operating Engineers Union. As you are aware, this is the 11th of our employee agreements we've brought forward in the last 16 months. Nine of those fortunately have been through the meet and confer process, two of them have been unilateral implementations, and we're hoping to go back to the table with those bargaining units shortly. This is the second hearing, as I said, this is the acceptance of the operating engineers, of the increase in their payment toward the retirement, and provides for savings in this budget year of $180,000, and in all subsequent years, $292,000. And it did meet all of our standards, and we appreciate the leadership provided by our employees' unions. They have been responsible and responsive, and we appreciate that. That's helped us balance this budget. As you know, it's the principles of this board, the leadership of Mrs. Robinson, and the work of Shannon Leslie, Tavine Cosio, Jim Dombowski, with some support from myself. And we could not have done it without the assistance of Louise Webster from the Auditor Controller's Office, who's worked with us along the way to be sure these are able to be implemented.
Okay, very good, thank you. Okay, before the board, we have a motion and a second to adopt under the second hearing action, and we'll please vote, and that passes with four affirmative votes and one absence, so.
Thanks very much.
Thank you very much. And now we're going to move to our addendum item, which is Item 38, and it is a public hearing on the Fire Protection District, and Chief Roper. Now I gotta go to something here that does an addendum thing.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, CEO Robinson, Bob Roper, Fire Chief, Fire Protection District. Today, what we have before us is to commence a public hearing regarding the Ventura County Ordinance 27. What we have is, the process usually is, we commence a public hearing today, and then what we have scheduled is for the 23rd, is the second hearing of this ordinance. What we intend to do is to take the International Fire Code and the California Fire Code, which are companion codes, and adopt those, and then what we do is take the particular items that are subject only to Ventura County, and we roll those into the ordinance. And so what happens is the codes would, upon the board's adoption on the 23rd, everything becomes effective on January of 2011. What we have to do with codes is, is the codes either, Ventura County codes have to either meet or exceed the state standards, and so every three years when the codes are renewed by the state, we have to look, are their new codes more restrictive than where we've been, and we have to do a give and take on that and adjustments. Following your board's approval on the 23rd, each of the cities that we work with will end up having to ratify certain portions of these ordinance to make them applicable to their cities. There's, today for your board, there's three documents have been given out to you. One is a couple of comments from county council on some just language, cleanup language to the ordinance. One is a letter from the Building Industry Association, and one is also a letter from the Farm Bureau we just received yesterday. Let me give you the highlights of Ordinance 27 is, is that the things that are new to the Ordinance 27, which... And we have no problem with endorsing solar energy. But what the picture that we gave you is a picture of a commercial roof structure filled full of solar panels. What you don't see is the built-in fire protection system by building design that's under the roof. And what happens is, is we are finding out, is when they put all the solar panels up on top, there may be a firewall that you don't see below the solar panels. And that our tactical operation is when we have a fire on one side of the building, we actually cut the roof to keep the forward progress of the fire going. Well, if the solar panels are covering that tactical area, we can't put that in. And so what we could end up doing is losing the whole building. So working with the state, the State Fire Marshal Office, and they've conducted guidelines, they will be amending the state fire code to deal with making sure that solar panels don't inhibit built-in fire protection systems, as well as giving us adequate access around the edges of the roof for firefighters to get to. So again, we're not against the solar panels. We're just trying to make sure that we don't end up inhibiting the built-in fire protection features that building was designed for. The next item is the access standards, where Ventura County has long had great access standards. Now the state has adopted theirs, and so we're just ratifying that. There's also one, special hazard permits. In today's high-tech world, we have a lot of businesses now that are using very ordinary chemicals and processes, but the end result is it may be a very volatile reaction. And so what we want to do is when we come across those, we would like to ask that the property owner goes through and gets a third-party verification of their process. So something as simple as water, if you electrically charge it, split the atoms or so forth, we don't have a hazardous situation. And so some of these processes are beyond the technical means of the fire district. And this is where we bring in somebody as a third party to validate that the process is safe and it's compatible with the neighboring jurisdictions that it's surrounding. Next one is restricted parking. We constantly have during our high-fire danger days or red flag days, we have a lot of private roads primarily up in our rural areas that have no areas to park, but people park anyhow. They park boats, they park motorhomes or their cars. What we have is ongoing issues about access of us getting in and if people have to get out. So we've researched this, researched it, and what we'd like to do is work with the public in these certain key areas and try to restrict that private access is, call it a fire lane. And there is a process. We've worked through county council's office. We can go through a public hearing and notice that this is a high-fire hazard area. There's these signs that would be put in. And the other portion of what I'm presenting is, we could actually use an administrative citation to tell people that they need to move their cars. There is provisions that if we fully adopt this, that we can tow the cars in these areas that are posted. There are privileged rights by the private property owners that they can object to it, and there's little we can do with that right now. But it's again, it's a group. What we intend to do is work with a group of neighbors in these private areas, private road areas, and get them to work on it as a community project, because what we're asking for is for their safety. The next item is the development setbacks. We have some areas that you can have a legal existing lot, and because of the topography that there's only a certain building area space on that legal existing lot. And we have several that people have built their homes, and it's next to a creek bed. Well, the creek bed gets brush, bamboo, and stuff, vegetation building up in it. And then because of the special environmental issues and so forth, they may be prevented from actually removing that flammable vegetation. Then what we have is no defensible space between the home and the creek bed itself. So what we're saying is, is that if a person has a legal existing lot and they only can only build in one area, we would like them to submit their plans to this, to us, and with a request for an alternate method of construction so that the construction materials that they use can weather the high temperatures from a direct fire exposure if we can't create that 100-foot setback. Next one is, is that as we get more and more granny flats and so forth, especially in the rural areas, we used to exempt homes that were granny flats that were under 700 square foot from having any water supply to them. When that happens, what we come across, especially on brush fires, we come up with a granny flat that the legal existing home may have been there for 50 years, and it has no water supply. Now they've built a granny flat, and it also has no water supply, and our problem just is compounded. So what we're requesting is that for no exemption for under 700 square feet, and that the water tank is constructed. And these don't have to be unsightly. They can be landscaped, or they can be plumbed underground with a drafting hydrant for us, but at least it gives us some type of water supply to deal with the increasing number of granny flats and small structures being built. And the last item is the composting and mulch standard. Following the fire out in the Bardstown, Piru area last year, what we ended up with is looking at the amount of combustible materials being brought into the county by the agricultural community, and also, if you remember back about 12 years ago, we had the Pick Suite fire in Ventura. As this green waste or compostable material is accumulated, if it is not properly managed, it can spontaneously combust. And then if the Pick Suite, what we had was little wind, so we had a very deep-seated smoldering fire that lasted for about 14 days. Or you can have the other extreme of the fire out in Piru, where you have a strong Santa Ana wind, and as it spontaneously combusts, now all those burning embers are spreading to the brush and causing a fire. The green waste is an issue that we have in Ventura County and all over the state. As it's being limited from going to landfills, has, something has to be done with it. And we're not against doing something with it, but it has to be properly managed. So what we want to do is work with the ag community and other businesses on properly managing it, rotating your piles and so forth, so we don't have spontaneous fires and the negative effects of that. During our process, what we did is we contacted several, many of our stakeholders out there. We actually invited, we had a stakeholders meeting at our headquarters. We've worked with Colab, APAC, the Farm Bureau, the BIA, Contractor Association, Engineers, and so forth to try to get them involved in this process. To date, we have a letter from the BIA asking questions about what our ordinance says, which you have also has is the response letter back to them, and we believe we've mitigated or answered any of their concerns. Also, we just received a letter yesterday from the Farm Bureau that I need to make you aware of because it wasn't addressed to me. But that letter, they're taking exception to the provisions under the composting and mulch. And I don't have, because it just came in yesterday, I don't have any way to tell you any dialogue that's happened between us. After working with county council's office this morning, I believe that, and county council, correct me if I'm wrong, what I'm asking is your board's permission to leave this under Chapter 19 that deals with composting and mulch. Leave that open for a meet and confer with the Farm Bureau so that we can amend any sections within there. We just don't have time to do it. It's my understanding that if we formally put that as part of this process today, then I can return to you on the 23rd with any changes to what you have before you that we proposed, and then your board can approve it on the 23rd in its entirety. Correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. So with that, that really concludes my presentation today. And then we have the other provisions under the four recommendations as far as scheduling the next hearing and so forth that I asked your board approval on.
Okay, that's an awful lot. Okay. Questions? This is a public hearing. I have one public request.
Do you want to do that first?
Do you have any questions first? You want to ask a question first?
Bob, on this, we talked about a house next to a creek, and I do appreciate the idea to figure out, we don't want to destroy our creeks, but we also, you have the responsibility to make sure we can defend that property. When you talk about alternative material, what kind of, what are you talking about? What are you thinking there?
Well, it may be that one side of the house is a block wall. And with dual-pane tempered glass, you know, it could possibly survive it. It may be depending upon what we actually see, the topography, the slope of the hill, and the type of fuels, it may have to be a solid block wall on one side to be able to take that much heat. So it's going to be, what ends up happening is if you want to build your house, you submit your plans and type of building materials you want. As we review the plans, we say, you're in a special situation. This won't fly. Now you have a chance to submit an alternate method. It's a standard process we have in place. So you, as a homeowner or the contractor, can design it, submit it back to us, and we can say, yes, we think this can work, or maybe it can't. We may ask you to put a foam or a sprinkler system on the exterior of the home.
I guess that's what I was looking at. If you get it away from material, if I have this nice lot out in a beautiful wooded area, and I really don't want a big concrete, I want this out that kind of matches the environment, you could come up with something else, possibly besides just a block wall or something like that.
Yeah.
Something retardant system or something.
Yeah. We're not against trying to get somebody to build their home, the structure there, but what we're trying to do is just make sure it can survive.
Okay. But besides material, it could be something else.
Correct.
It could be a sprinkler system, a foam system, or something else.
Okay, correct.
I have a question on the granny flat issue. You're saying that this would now have, there would be no exemption for the water supply, that they would have to have an identified water supply. Do you have a feel for generally what that costs? And the question, of course, we're trying to incentivize these types of units for housing, so.
Well, in most of the areas that you're going to have a potable water supply by a water purveyor anyhow with a fire hydrant. So this is only on the exceptional areas of probably in the more rural areas. Okay. A water tank, I was, I was asked, you know, how big is a water tank that has 2,500 gallons? And it's basically six foot high by eight foot in diameter. Okay? They make plastic ones that can do it. As far as the cost to doing it, if it was put just right down at the road, so all is a water tank and fittings, it can be somewhere around $1,500 to $2,000.
Okay.
Yeah, and I appreciate the question. I might just point out, if there's already an existing water supply to the main house, then, so we're not disadvantaging all those units. If you don't have any water supply to that house, this is probably the time to visit the issue if you're...
Well, I don't disagree with that. I was curious as to the cost and the...
Yeah. And we're looking at some of them, the people will have to put in a tank anyhow to deal with potable water, so it may be all part of the project.
Okay. And my last question on the mulching piece, so you're proposing to hold that section for two weeks, because we won't meet for two weeks, to try and do some further conversation with the Farm Bureau?
Yeah. What we intend to do is we're reaching out to the Farm Bureau today to ask them to meet with us and environmental health to deal with their objections in the letter, to see if we can return back to your board on the 23rd with a compromise or to be able to meet the intent of what we want as well as what they want for the ag interest. Yes.
Because we've had some discussions on this, and I know it's, one, it is something, again, that we have supported as far as the benefits of it, but the issue has been just what has been identified in this proposed language. But there still are obviously not agreement totally, so.
Correct.
So would we, just finally, would we act on it as proposed and then come back with any changes would come back at the second?
Yeah, that's essentially correct. The advice we gave was the reason we have two readings of an ordinance like this is to vet issues like this, and you can consider changes and make changes on the second and final reading. It doesn't have to be word for word, both readings. And the only rule is if it's fundamentally different than the proposed rules, so that it would not be fair notice to people about the change, then you might have to have an additional reading. But so as long as it's generally within the scope of the proposal and it's not significantly different, then you could just adopt the whole ordinance at the next hearing.
Okay. Any other questions? Yes?
Yeah, Chief, are you also going to be with Agroment, with Bill Camarillo? Because, you know, they do a lot of green waste and composting.
Yeah. We'll make sure we do.
Remember they had their composting over at the San Fran River, and we had some concerns there, too?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Make one comment, really support the mulch, the issue of the fires and the Pick Suite fire. I'll tell you, it was bright when I was elected. I would suggest it's probably the last thing you want to have happen in your district.
Yeah.
Because what was so difficult with this one was it was smoldering, and they had no place to put the stuff. So the way you solve this problem is you break these piles up, and there's no place to put it. So I think this, if there was ever a place that I support real common sense preventative planning, it's those huge piles.
And then to add a little bit, we had the smoke right into, went right into South Bank and Oxford.
Well, it's both, it certainly is a, is being brought forward here, a fire safety issue, but also a environmental health issue. And we've had discussions, and they're working well together on what's the best plan for this. If, why don't we take a moment here and do the public hearing part of this, open for public hearing on this item? And we have Tina Rasna. Welcome. Good morning.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Tina Rasna. I live at 1,000 South Ventura Park Road in Newbury Park, and I'm here in my capacity as Secretary of the Ventura Park Fire Safe Council, Inc. We're a neighborhood organization that's worked closely with the fire department to improve fire safety in our community. I wanted to thank the chief for working with our community to try to identify ways that we can improve safety in a time of fire or the natural disaster. And typically, the problem with the narrow roads is constantly coming up and the challenge of what to do about people who make the situation worse by parking their vehicles on these already narrow roads, particularly during red flag days or critical fire weather. So we support the proposed ordinance with respect to Section 503.4.1 and 503.4.2 that have to do with the parking, the putting of signage, and giving the fire department the authority to cite and to have vehicles towed. I'm not prepared to speak to the rest of the ordinance because we didn't meet as a group to review it and address it. So my comments are specifically limited to the parking issue, but we are supportive, and we do thank the fire department for making this effort to help us keep our community safe. If there's any questions, I'm happy to take them.
Any questions? Yes?
On the parking ordinance, is that going to be as needed?
Well, thank you first, Tina, for coming in to speak positively. Thank you.
What do you do on those, on those fire roads? You'll make them fire roads as needed?
Yeah. I have to tell your board that the restricted parking is, that whole issue is not going to happen overnight, because we're going to have a lot of work dealing with each area of the private property owners, going through the legal process, getting signage put up and so forth so that we can actually do it. It's probably going to be a multi-year effort to get it fully flushed out, to make sure that it's really a viable program.
And make sure that the stakeholders understand that, and the residents and...
Correct. Correct. But this is the provisions that allow us to get started on it.
Yeah, because many, many times, you know, we had a parked car, and I've seen it in the news, you know, where the fire trucks can't get through. So I think the signage and also educating the stakeholders is extremely important.
Yes.
I just want to comment that this has been some, a problem that we've been trying to work on for quite some time, and I think this is a really good potential. This area, particularly in Ventura Park, I know it would also affect the Santa Susana Knowles, but out in Ventura Park, the open space land that is around the community hasn't burned in a half-century. you know, where the fire trucks can't get through, and so I think the signage and also educating the stakeholders is extremely important.
Yes.
I just want to comment that this has been some, a problem that we've been trying to work on for quite some time, and I think this is a really good potential. This area, particularly in Ventura Park, I know it would also affect the Santa Susana Knowles, but out in Ventura Park, the open space land that is around the community hasn't burned in a half-century, and they have very narrow streets there, and they're really not designed for today's multi-car homes, and we end up having cars parked on the road, and then it makes it really difficult for, you know, fire engines to get up there and people to evacuate during an emergency. So it, this particular section of the code, I think, really goes to address a very grave safety concern. So I'm so glad that you have come up with this, I hope it moves forward, and you know, my office will do whatever we can to assist that, and also just really happy that we do now have a Ventura Park Fire Safe Council that we'll be able to work with and be able to help make that area more safe from fire.
Okay. Again, thank you for coming to speak on the public hearing. No further public comments requested, so we'll close that. Anything else, chief, to add to this?
No.
Okay, this is before the board. We have a motion and a second.
And the meeting will be opened.
And we'll move ahead with the vote on that, and it is passes for the reading of the ordinance for the second hearing in November 23rd.
An ordinance of Ventura County Fire Protection District adopting by reference the 2010 California Fire Code, portions of the 2009 International Fire Code, together with the appendix chapters B, C, E, F, G, K, L, M, N, and O, with additions, deletions, and amendments thereto, and to repeal Ventura County Fire Protection District Ordinance Number 26.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Be back, we'll see you in two weeks. Okay. Board members, that completes our regular agenda. We're going to go into closed session now. There will be an announcement out of closed session, and.
Yes, ma'am, chair.
Yes, yes is the answer. So let's go into closed session, and Roberta will work with you on how to manage this announcement part. We'll probably try, I have to see if we have any critical time certain things first, decide Okay. Are we on?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, we have two announcements out of closed session. We'll start with the first one with Leroy, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, ma'am, chair. On item 25, which is Medina versus City of Simi Valley, Ventura County Superior Court Case Number 56-2010-00368799, the board has authorized the settlement and wish the county will pay $175,000 to plaintiff. $87,500 will be paid by an insurance company representing or on behalf of Kelly Maintenance, and the county will be paying $87,500 on behalf of the City of Simi Valley. And the board approved that settlement by a vote of 5-0. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And then the second one has been the ongoing one that's on the agenda today, it was review of confidential juvenile records. So we have a prepared report out on that, and it's headed conclusions from review of confidential juvenile records, WIC 16502.5. And I'll start with reading that statement. "It is difficult to understand the reasoning behind tragic events that occur within our society. The board feels strongly that we must assess and learn from each event. With a critical eye, we have addressed and understood how the Child Protective Service System works, and we continue to advocate for the welfare of all children, and will do so by advancing changes for the benefit of all those who are associated with the child welfare system. We recognize the great responsibility that rests on our shoulders, the shoulders of our children, family service workers, and others who face the realities of child abuse within our community. The Board of Supervisors has held six special closed sessions over the last two months regarding the disclosure of juvenile court records relating to the death of a child who is associated with the child welfare system. As a result of these closed sessions with the Board of Supervisors, the department has taken immediate action to institute a number of policy changes. The following policy changes have been implemented." Mr. Zimmerman will go through those.
Under policy changes, interviewing. In physical and sexual abuse cases involving children, warrants will be sought to independently interview children in an appropriate environment away from the influence of alleged perpetrator. Also, in addition to the hotline referral report, the new policy will require interviews of all reporting parties by the assigned field's social worker as part of the investigative process. Under guardianship, the new policy regarding probate guardianship will require that all referrals associated with the case shall remain open until the initiation of the guardianship has been completed. Probate guardianships are commonly used to establish a safe environment for the child, usually with a relative, and with the least disruption to the child. This legal action is critical to assure that the caretakers of the child will seriously fulfill their, will seriously fulfill their role and obligation to nurture and protect the child. As such, the referral will not be closed until assurance has been made that this action has occurred. In addition to the above policy changes, and based on the direct conversations with the board, the department will be completing the following activities, reviews, and organizational changes. These changes will enhance the responsiveness and effectiveness of the current system. It is anticipated that the listed activities will be completed within the next 12 months. These activities include the following. Develop and implement the necessary protocols and practices for CPS to access medical or mental health records in order to obtain information that may be used to evaluate the stability and risks associated with families that may have mental illness or other medical conditions that may impact the safety of a child. Second, develop and provide additional training to CPS workers regarding intervention techniques, evaluation strategies, and case planning with families and individuals with mental Third, as part of, as part of the annual training, include an enhanced segment for interviewing skills and techniques. All staff will be required to participate in this training over the next 12 months. Fourth, form an independent functional unit dedicated to the monitoring and assessment of staff performance and compliance to establish policies and professional practices. Fifth, establish inter-agency, inter-county agreements to perform peer case reviews. Peer case reviews by a third party are an important aspect of professional oversight. An inter-county relationship will allow for detailed case reviews that are kept within the bounds of confidentiality and will yield an objective review that can be used for the betterment of the work performed by staff. Sixth, secure the services of an independent third-party entity to perform a professional standards review of the CPS system. Objectivity is paramount in order to fully assess the strengths or weaknesses of a system. Therefore, the department will establish and participate in a third-party review assessing the standards and policies of the CPS system. And seventh, perform a legislative review to assess the legal options regarding the ability to intervene and/or remain legally connected to a known dependency case beyond the period currently allowed by law. This review will have particular focus on cases that may have mental health risks, substance abuse, or other risk factors that may require continual oversight. Future state or federal legislative requests may be developed as appropriate to allow for the involvement of CPS with dependent cases where mental health risk factors are associated with the safeties, the child's safety.
Okay. Thank you. And that is available in full context for you. Anything else, board members? We appreciate the work and the work that's in front of us, so, thank you.
Thank you.
And that, board members, we go back into closed sessions, but no further announcements out of closed sessions, and we'll adjourn from that.
Will you be available later?
Yes. Thank you.
Can I get a copy of that?
Yes, she has copies.